Sorry, that took awhile.
Alright, hello, hello team, hello. Okay, so I want to do a couple of things first. We have a rule, a rule here where if we have more than sixteen speakers on an item, everyone will get two minutes instead of three. So before we start anything, I'd like to get a show of hands of both online and in person. Who's here to speak about the public hearing item, the concept review? Please just raise your hand. Okay, and also online, you guys? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Is anyone online?
Got about nine raised hands.
Okay, so everyone will have two minutes when we get there. Plan accordingly. Alright, but right now, we're going to talk about, we're gonna have public participation, which are folks who want to talk about anything except the public hearing item. If anyone wants to speak, uh, is anyone signed up?
Well, we still have some hands up, I think, from the previous ask. So I would ask that people maybe raise their hands if, only if right now, only if you wish to speak for this open comment part of the meeting. Just give it a couple of seconds.
Alright, excellent. Nobody for public participation?
There are actually a couple of hands, yeah.
Oh, there are? Never mind.
A few online.
Okay.
Yes, okay, we'll start with George Kraft, followed by Lynn Segal. George, you have three minutes, please go ahead.
Wow, finally got the unmute. This is just general comments. I had a comment about the Williams Village development specifically.
Alright, George, George. We're gonna be speaking about that during the public hearing period, a comment period. So if you don't mind holding off on your comments.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
That's correct, yeah. Thank you, George. Look forward to hearing from you later. Okay, Lynn Segal, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Top of the agenda is Gaza. That's your most important thing that you as a planning board can be thinking about. Because if we have continued involvement in that situation, we are gonna be depleted of funds in reparations until doomsday. If, unless we get bombed first by Iran in protest. So the best thing that you can do as a planning board is recommend a city council to get out of Gaza and the occupation and and yesterday, seventy-five years ago, actually. And be on the right side of history and do it, and do it soon. Because you haven't got anything to plan for, otherwise, nothing. A big fat nothing. Not, not the Williams Village thing, nothing. Now, as far as weather vein, this is the most obscene example of a development that I've ever come before. And I watched this come about when it was Water View first. And it's just appalling that we're getting more and more of this. And it's just like a little dense microcity. It's Jared Polis's wet dream. And we don't need that in Boulder. And we've got enough densification all over the place without making, that isn't, actually, you know, it's not, it's not densification. There was nothing there. There's still nothing there. It's anchored on a brew pub, remember? So what do we need with things like that? And a garage in every unit? And, you know, just add a couple lanes to Rappahoe, no problem. No, the all of these developments and all the wealth inequity. The wealth inequity just causes more homelessness and we haven't got the money for it. Six million bucks to clean up the trash and everything else. And you can watch, city council's gonna entertain it for six, for three hours, and that isn't gonna be enough. They could take three years and they can never solve it. Mike Johnston can't solve it, New York can't solve it, San Francisco can't solve it. But you know what? The way you solve it is you tell developers, no. And you tell them, no, at the planning board. You tell them, no height increases. You tell them, no parking relaxations. That's what you do. You say, you learn how to say no. You go to school to learn, no, no, no. That's the only way. And every, then you have to tell everybody else to do it too. Because the homeless will go from one town to the next and they'll propagate to Boulder. And we'll just be doing nothing but paying a hundred thousand dollars for each one.
Lynn, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Please wrap it up.
Per year.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the open comment section.
Okay, thank you. Apparently, we have a comment, a question about timing. We've got a number of call-up items to go through. My guess is we'll get through the pretty quickly. So whoever asked the question, I believe, will probably start on the public hearing item by about 6:30. But we won't get to public comment about that until probably 7:15 or 7:30, so just be aware. Alright, approval of minutes. Does someone mind make a motion on the minutes for November 21st?
So moved. I move that we approve the minutes from November 21st.
Second.
Okay, I was not there, so, Mark?
Yes.
Yes, Kurt?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Okay, great. Lisa? Is Lisa there?
Did? I don't see her.
Okay, I thought you had let her in. Okay, planning board minutes from December 5th. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from December 5th.
Second.
Great. Mark?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Alright, passes. Planning board minutes from December 19th, anyone wanna?
I move that we approve the minutes from December 19th.
I'll second.
Let's give it to ML. Give it to ML. Mark?
Yes.
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 ML?
Yes.
George?
I was absent.
Okay, Sarah is a yes, and so it passes. Okay, now we have discussion of dispositions and call-ups and continuations. Call-up item, final plat to subdivide the property at 1937 Upland Avenue to create three lots. Lot one is nineteen, one that, nineteen hundred, nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five square feet. Lot two is nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four square feet. And lot three is seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one square feet. Adam subdivision case number tech 2022-00006. The preliminary plat was approved through case number LUR 2022-00003. This application is subject to potential call-up on or before January 16th, 2024. Does anyone have questions for staff or does anyone want to call it up? Okay, next call-up item. 2105 Mapleton Avenue, non-conforming use review, LUR 2023-00047. Non-conforming use review for a 201 square foot addition to the attached dwelling unit at 2105 Mapleton Avenue, including updated landscaping and architectural improvements. The call-up period expires on January 16th, 2024. Questions for staff? Anyone want to call it up? Oh wait, ML, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, I just have a question for staff on this. I'm curious about, um, so the requested or the required off-street parking for 2103 Mapleton is not on the 2103 Mapleton property? Am I reading that correct? But it's on the adjacent property?
No, that is incorrect, and apologies if that was not conveyed correctly. But they are on the same property. These, this duplex has been condo-ed out. So there is only one property here.
Oh, so the property line has more to do with it being duplex condos, condos?
Correct.
On one piece of land, got it.
Correct, yes. It's not an official property line.
Thank you. I was thinking, how did that happen? I'd like to know that little workaround. Thank you, Adam. I don't intend to call it up.
Okay, alright, we'll move on to call-up item, call-up item C. Stream, wetland and water body map revision, WET 2023-00019. Gebhardt ISP mapping revision. The call-up period expires on January 16th, 2024. Questions, comments, call-ups? Nope, okay. Call-up item D, standard wetland permit, WET 2023-00014. Driveway culvert replacement at 8550 and 8600 Valmont. The call-up period expires on January 16th, 2024. Questions, comments, call-ups? I told you, I told you, Edward, I'd get you out of here. Call-up item E, standard wetland permit, WET 2023-00020. Chapman Drive Trailhead and pedestrian bridge. The call-up period expires on Jan, oh, shoot, January 6th, 16th, 2024. Yes, go ahead, please.
I'm ruining Edward's night. So I, yeah, I have a few questions about this. There's, as I understand it, there's two main portions to this project. One is the bridge, which is the extension of the Holy Creek path. And then the other one is the significant changes to the parking area and the reconfiguration and the walkways of, and so on. Is that, that's correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so in terms of the turnaround and the trailer parking, that, the motivation for that is to provide for horse trailers and hand cycles, is that? Is my understanding correct?
In it primarily just indicates improvement to the access there. I don't see a specific type of user that it's been designed for according to the application.
Okay, well, the, the description talks primarily about horse trailers and this trailer parking area there. Um, so, and, and maybe this is more of a question for, for O S M P. Um, I don't know if anybody is available for that. But really, my question comes down to, this is a significant amount of work with a significant amount of, I think, earth-moving and regrading and disturbance of existing land, even though a lot of it is on with the, the former house site there. So it's kind of disturbed. It was disturbed at one time. But I think it's largely regrowing. And I just, I have questions, how much demand there actually is for horse trailer parking there? Or hand cycle parking there? So in the context of wetlands, we have in 993E, there's this criterion about minimization that says the applicant should, shall demonstrate that the activity is designed and located to minimize direct or indirect impacts to the adjacent wetland stream or water body. And we, I think we're going to be getting training in what this means. But my interpretation of that is minimize sort of balancing the values, the, the benefits that might be coming from this. And if the benefits are minimal, then I have questions about the, the wetland impacts that are resulting from that. So I don't know if you have any thoughts.
The way we look at it typically is if you look in their wetland report, section 8.0 talks about their alternative analysis. And so we look to see, was that a robust, robust analysis, looking at options that help mitigate the impacts? And then, of course, also within that, looking at first mitigating direct impact to the wetland or water body versus the inner and outer buffers, which in this case, primary impacts are to the buffers and there are no permanent impacts to the wetland itself.
Right, so in the in the alternatives, I guess, it was, it talked about the no-build option, which, as it should. And the no-build option says, well, if we didn't build, then we wouldn't get this trailer parking. But that is not really, just having the trailer parking is not beneficial if it's not actually used. So I guess I would like to call this up.
Alright, there you go. It's been called up.
So.
I have additional questions, and since it's been called up, it might be good to pose my question so that you can further, when, when, when we, when you do come back before us, you can be prepared with, I have a completely different take on this, but I was about to call it up as well, so.
Send them by email. Or you can send them by email.
Okay.
Not, not to, not to keep them talking, but you could also.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
And you should probably send your comments by email as well, just to reiterate them. Excellent. Alright, we will move on to the final call. Thank you, Edward. Final call-up item, standard wetland permit, WET 2023-00021. Saw Hill, Saw Hill Pond's improvements. The call-up period expires on January 26th, 2024. Any questions, comments, guys on the, online? No? Alright. We're not calling that up. Edward, go home.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Okay, we are now getting to the public hearing section of our meeting. The public hearing item tonight, agenda title, concept review proposal to redevelop the 448,668 square foot site at 2952 Baseline Road with a mixed-use development consisting of residential, commercial, hotel and restaurant uses. The existing buildings on site would be demolished and replaced with six new four-to-five-story buildings containing retail, restaurant and hotel uses, as well as approximately 610 new dwelling units and a mix of structured and underground parking. The unit type mix would include market rate units and student housing units reviewed under case number LUR 2023-00038. Before Chandler, the staff person starts, I do want to just go through if anyone has a conflict of interest. Uh, no, I can see ML, I can't see George. George, if you have a conflict of interest, just say yes or no.
Nope.
Nope, okay, excellent. Uh, alright, so Chandler, who's home with the cold and some sick children, please take it away.
Alright, thank you. Um, just to check, you guys are seeing the presentation view, you're not seeing my notes?
Well, so far, we're seeing the presentation, yeah.
Excellent, okay. Good evening, planning board members. I'm Chandler Van Scott, Principal Planner in Planning and Development Services, and this presentation is for the concept plan review at 2952 Baseline Road. And so presentation highlights very briefly. I'll go over the concept plan and purpose, public notification procedures, the planning context, project background, summary of the proposed project, and we'll finish with key issues. Um, so the concept plan review process, purpose is to allow planning board to review the general development plan, including land uses, arrangement of those uses, general circulation patterns, methods of encouraging alternative transportation, architectural characteristics, environmental preservation, et cetera. And it is intended to give the applicant comments from the public, city staff and planning board early in the process, prior to submission of a formal site review application. No formal action, which is approval or denial, is required on this application. So in terms of public notification, written notice was sent to property owners within 600 feet of the subject site. Notice was posted on the property as well. Staff initially received comments and questions from several neighboring property owners and residents expressing concerns. Those, the primary concerns of those opposed include traffic and safety issues, loss of existing commercial space, particularly the dark horse, and the overall scale and density of the project. And the majority of written comments, which largely were sent directly to planning board in the last 72 hours, express support for the proposal. Um, so the approximately 9.59 acre project site encompasses the triangular area located east of Highway 36, south of Baseline Road and west of 30th Street, and excludes the baseline crossing site on the northwest corner of the site and the McDonald's site. The BBCP or Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan land use designation is split between mixed-use business or MUB and community business or CB, defined in chapter three of the 2010 Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as follows. Um, so I'll just kind of paraphrase the community business designation. Our focal points for commercial activity serving a sub-community or collection of neighborhoods intended to serve daily convenience shopping and personal service needs of nearby residents and support walkable communities. Mixed-use business development may be appropriate and will be encouraged in some business areas. Generally, the use applies to areas around 29th Street, as well as North Boulder Village Center, the commercial areas near Williams Village and other parcels around Pearl Street, 28th and 30th Street. And this consists generally of business or residential uses. Housing and public uses supporting housing will be encouraged and may be required. Um, this map shows the overall split between the two land use designations. So as you can see, the majority of the site, the eastern portion of the site is designated MUB. Um, the BBCP land use designation for the eastern portion of the site was changed from CB to MUB during the 2000 Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan update. But the site has never been rezoned to reflect the MUB designation. Um, so zoning districts intended to implement the MUB designation typically include BMS and the MU zone, so MU one, two, three, or four. Um, further, the Williams Village Center is identified in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as a neighborhood center, and I'll get more into that later in the presentation. So in terms of zoning, the site is currently zoned Business Community 2 or BC2. It's adjacent to B1 zoning to the north across Baseline. Public zoning to the east across 30th, which is where Williams Village is located. To the west across Highway 36 lies the 2700 Baseline Site, which is also zoned BC2, as well as Base Mark, and the Martin Acres Neighborhood, which is zoned RL1. Uh, the BC2 zoning district is defined as business areas containing retail centers serving a number of neighborhoods where retail-type stores predominate, predominate. Um, the project site is also located in a business community area subject to special use restrictions for appendix and of the land use code. And I will get into that as well a little bit later in the presentation. Um, so this slide just shows an aerial map showing some of the surrounding context. To the east across 30th Street is the University of Colorado Williams Village Dormitory Complex, which contains the 12-story, 12-story Darley and Sterns Buildings and the six-story Bear Creek Apartment Buildings. Across Baseline Road to the north are a variety of retail service and office uses, including a gas station, a beauty salon, mortuary and a medical office building. To the northeast of the intersection of Baseline and 30th Street lies the Baseline Subdivision, which is a single-family neighborhood that has existed since the early 1960s. US 36 runs along the eastern boundary of the site, across which lies the Martin Acres Neighborhood. Aside from the CU buildings, all the existing buildings surrounding the site are generally one to three stories in height. Um, so this aerial image shows the existing site. Um, the site currently contains five existing one-to-three-story buildings containing a variety of retail and restaurant businesses, including Sprouts, the Dark Horse Saloon, Cosmos Pizza Liquor Store, a bank, and several other restaurants. I'm not including the hotel. There is about 65,000 square feet of commercial space currently on the site. There's a Conoco Gas Station on the northeast corner of the site off Baseline Road. And on the south corner of the site is the Boulder Broker Inn, legal non-conforming hotel use. Both the Dark Horse and the Broker Inn have been in this location since 1974. However, the property is not individually landmarked or located in a historic district, although it is eligible, as noted in the staff memo. Um, in terms of the existing site access, um, not including the baseline crossing or McDonald's sites, there are currently nine existing access points to the site. There are four curb cuts on Baseline Road, five curb cuts along 30th Street. Of the four existing access points on Baseline Road, only one, which is located between Baseline Crossing and McDonald's, shown there in green on the top of the screen, has full movement turn access, with the remainder being right-in, right-out only. Similarly, the existing access points on 30th Street are also right-in, right-out only, with the exception of the access serving Cosmos Pizza Building. Uh, with only a single drive aisle providing access to westbound lanes on Baseline, the current access configuration severely limits opportunities for westbound travel from the site with U-turns on either 30th Street or at the signaled intersection of 30th and Baseline being required for the majority of exit points from the site. Um, so the site, much of the site is affected by the regulatory floodplain, including the 100-year floodplain, the conveyance zone, and small portions of high-hazard zone. I can get, I can respond to, Kurt asked a question earlier about floodplain, which I can respond to later. Um, so now jumping to the proposed project. As ordered in the title, the proposal is for a mixed-use development consisting of 610 attached residential units. Of those, 285 would be student housing and 325 would be non-student units. That comprises roughly 82% of the overall area. Um, they are proposing roughly 69,382 square feet of ground floor commercial, which is about 8% of the floor area. A 76,530 square foot hotel use, or 6%, and about 7,796 square feet of restaurant use. So as shown here, the, there are six four-to-five-story buildings proposed, ranging from 43,000 square feet to 267,000 square feet in size for a net FAR of about 1.9. Um, a new L-shaped right-of-way or street to break down the existing super block and a mix of at-grade parks, plazas, landscape setbacks and rooftop decks. It is worth noting that as part of the zoning for affordable housing code changes, which were adopted by council in October 2023 and went into effect on January 1st of this year, intensity standards in the BC2 Zone District were revised so that the 1,600 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit requirement was replaced with a 1.5 FAR and a 15% open space per lot requirement. Um, up to a 2.0 FAR is permitted and designated neighborhood centers, of which this is one. Therefore, the proposed FAR is consistent with existing BC2 intensity standards. Um, the proposed project includes redevelopment of the site with a mix of attached residential, commercial and hotel uses, totaling approximately 725,989 square feet in floor area. Um, under the current proposal, and this is shown here on the land use map diagram, Buildings A and B are proposed as a mix of ground floor commercial with residential units above. Buildings C and F are proposed as entirely residential, non-student. And Building D is proposed as a hotel use with an attached ground floor restaurant and commercial uses above. And Building E is proposed to be entirely student housing. Um, so these are just some artistic renderings provided with the application, showing just sort of the, the basic architectural idea and some of the landscaping. And these are reference images also provided with the application. The application includes several reference images to illustrate the proposed project's architectural intent, but does not provide specific information on materials. And staff's comments under concept review criteria in the memo provide some site review considerations that we have notified the applicant of. Um, so a summary of required modifications, as we understand them at this time. Um, the proposed modifications to land use code would include a parking reduction, as yet of undetermined size. A height modification to allow for 55-foot buildings where 35 feet is the maximum by right height. A modification to the maximum number of stories to allow for four- and five-story buildings where three is the maximum number of stories. Um, and modification to access standards to allow for more than one access point per property. For the height modification request, community benefit regulations would apply. Um, so bonus floor area is used to determine the required number of bonus units above the 25% inclusionary housing requirement, and that's based on the amount of floor area that exists above the third story. So all the floor area and the fourth and fifth stories. Um, and this results in additional required permanently affordable units or cash and low, as the case may be. So key issues for discussion, and these are also outlined in the staff memo. Um, key issue, I will just jump to the slides to save time. So key issue one is the proposed concept plan generally compatible with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Um, these are some considerations for that discussion that we can come back to once the discussion begins. Again, it is a neighborhood center is listed in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Um, worth noting is that BC2 conditional use standards require a use review if ground floor residential area exceeds 10% of the total floor area. Um, this is the primary criterion used in that use review process, which we can also come back to and discuss. Key issue number two, does planning board have? Key issue number two, does planning board have feedback for the applicant on the conceptual site plan and building design? Here are some key takeaways from the discussion, which we will be able to use and which are also listed in the staff memorandum. Key issue number three is the proposed building height of fifty five feet in general proportion to the height of existing buildings in the area and the proposed or projected heights of buildings in the area. And key issue number four. Will be any other key issues or. Topics of discussion that the planning board decides to come up with, and this is a building height context map showing height of existing buildings in the surrounding area. Then I have a ton of pictures from within the site. Illustrating the surrounding context, but I figured we would probably get to those during discussion. So that is all for now. Thank you.
Thank you Chandler. Before we get to questions for Chandler, clarifying questions. If you came in after the meeting started and you intend to speak on this topic, sign up over here. You'll have two, everyone will have two minutes. All right, who has questions for Chandler? Go ahead.
I can start, um, if I get to them. I had several questions that I sent you. The, oh, thank you. The first one is about the inner, the. Really the access points, but particularly. The, the access points on to baseline and whether any of those. Under the city standards and policies could be signalized.
Yes, and we were able to get some feedback from Edward on that answer, and. The answer is yes, it's a possibility. There's a lot to take into consideration, and it would be based on. Largely on the final project plans that came in during site review as well as the traffic study that they provided at that time. There's also spacing considerations, traffic queuing, et cetera, but it is possible. To provide potentially one signalized intersection between. U S thirty six and thirtieth street.
Okay, sounds good. My next question is also about transportation really, and it's about the fact that. In the, the proposal, some of the streets. Or at least one of the streets, depending on any class site, is public, and then there are a couple of other sections that are private. And I'm trying to understand how, from the city's perspective, how do you view? The weather, weather streets should be private or public. What are the trade offs? What are staff's preferences, I guess?
Yeah. In general, the city prefers public streets. There are standards in the land use code for when we do require dedication of right of way. We also have to consider the subdivision standards. So right now, we don't really know. The extent to which they're planning to subdivide the site, but oftentimes right of way is required to provide the necessary frontage for subdivided lots. There's also maintenance requirements, so. The city has standards for right of way and for emergency access and things like that. So typically. Requiring right of way dedication allows us to ensure that maintenance and access and all those things meet our standards. So we, we didn't really get into a in-depth review of. All the individual streets shown on, on this concept plan and kind of discussing whether or not they would be public or private, but. In general. I think that it's, it's safe to say that we prefer right of way to be dedicated and to be public and that that will likely be the case on this site.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's helpful.
No, keep going. Just, um, can, um, Chandler, will you take down the building height context map so I can see? The other two board members, if they have questions. Go ahead, please.
Okay. The next question is about the extents of the Williams Village Center. In the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, when it talks about the neighborhood centers, it just has dots. And is there anything to clarify? What the actual extents are of, the intended extents are of the Williams Village Center?
Yeah, so I looked into that and I wasn't able to find anything specific that delineated the exact boundaries. My take on it, after looking at all the other designated, or designated neighborhood centers in the comp plan. And how they're shown and how they're titled. Is that all of these areas that are listed as neighborhood centers were already essentially developed as commercial. Prior to. You know, ve- very early on, most, most of them in the seventies, so they're listed as names that they're commonly known by, like Base Mar. Williams Village, Diagonal Plaza, University Hill District, et cetera. So, and then looking at the zoning map. Which largely corresponds like B C two or M, M U zoning is generally applied to all the areas that are shown as neighborhood centers. It, it seems to me that the way that the dots are basically intended to represent kind of well-known commercial areas. And all the properties that are included within the, whatever they're named, so like Base Mar doesn't have. Doesn't specify the exact addresses. There's multiple parcels in Base Mar. But the zoning kind of applies to the whole shopping center, so. And from what I can tell, it seems that it was just kind of intended to. Apply to. The sites as we know them, if that makes sense.
Okay, so your conclusion is that it would apply to the entire triangle.
That's correct.
Okay, which includes this site plus diagonal crossing plus McDonald's.
Yes.
Okay.
Baseline, not diagonal.
Sorry, baseline, yeah.
Yeah, I, I knew, I knew what you meant.
Okay, and then last question. No, I'll hold off on the last question after I talk to the. After I ask the applicants. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and go to the folks who are online, George and then M L.
Mine should be quick, Chandler, quick question for you regarding. When you, when you had that, when you had that building height context map up. And you were talking us through the presentation, basically outside of. The, the parcels that are the C U dormitories and apartments. Everything is roughly one and three stor- one to three stories that abuts the site, is that correct?
Yes, aside from Williams Village.
And, and Williams Village, just to, just to refresh my memory. Williams Village is C U land, so. When those were built and, and the way those are set up is Boulder has no control over the height of those buildings, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, that's, that's all I wanted. Thanks.
Thanks, George, M L.
Thank you, Sarah. I have a, a number of questions, so just to talk briefly about the zoning Chandler. My understanding is. According to the Boulder Valley Comp Plan land use, it's an M U B. But that was never rezoned, so it remains a B C two?
That's correct.
And B C two zoning is predominantly retail?
Yes, it's predominantly retail, it's, it's intended to. Be predominantly retail and just to be kind of neighborhood serving retail and personal service uses.
Great, thank you for that. So, do we know, I think that the, the question came ahead of time for you as well. The proposed uses and square footage, how do the proposed uses and square footage compare to those being displaced? So are we getting more, less, or the same amount of services that are currently provided in this proposal?
Yeah, so I can, I mean, I'm sure that the applicant is going to discuss that in detail, but. Based on our numbers, the, the existing amount of commercial space on the site is about sixty six thousand square feet. And all told, they'll be providing upwards of seventy five thousand square feet. So it, it would be actually more commercial space than is currently on the site.
Okay.
M L, can I say? Colloquy on that? Earlier, you said it was sixty five or sixty six thousand, not including the broker. Is that what you said?
No, I think it's, it's just sixty six thousand. So the broker is a hotel, which isn't retail. Is it? That's about the same size as the, as the new hotel that they're proposing. So the hotel replacement will be about one, one to one.
I see, so you were only talking about the non-hotels.
Okay, correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, M L.
So, uh, code wise or zoning wise. The hotel use. It was kind of confusing because some of the information was old, and I think the ordinance to the use table. Changed things in the interim, so just to clarify, the hotel, is the hotel use. Now allowed, given. Do the use table change, or has that not happened?
That has not happened, and that's something I was able to speak with the applicant about. And I'm sure that they'll address as well in their presentation, but yeah, hotels are currently prohibited in B C two. And according to the applicant, it's, it's really kind of a. They're putting it out there as a potential kind of third phase. Addition to the site if, you know, the, the use table or the zoning is changed. Between now and when that phase happens, which would likely not be for quite a while.
Got it. Thank you. Last question. The staff noted that the proposed site access is not consistent with code requirements. Did the applicant have a response to that?
Yes, and, and I'm sure they'll discuss that as well, but I think. In general, so we can allow more than one access point, but it has to basically be justified through a traffic study during the site review process. So they have to ask formally for an exception to the design and construction standards. They didn't really get into, you know, whether they were going to be asking for that or not, and as I mentioned before, the, the concept plan didn't really show. The final subdivision layout. So when we were looking at it, we were looking at it as, as one big site essentially with seven access points or whatever, but. Theoretically, if they were to subdivide the site so that each of those buildings sat on its own lot. Then each of those lots could have its own independent access point. So the access is definitely something that will require a lot more analysis and kind of details during site review to figure out. But yes, currently, if, if it is one site, just looking at it kind of at face value. Currently, it doesn't meet access standards, and the proposal as shown also does not meet access standards.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chandler. That, those were all my questions.
All right, thanks, M L. Mark? No, sorry. Laura, sorry. Thank you, thank you. Hi Chandler, great presentation. Thank you so much. Could you pull back up the diagram of the site as the applicant wants to build it, the proposed site plan?
Yes.
I have just a couple of questions that, hoping you could point out some things on that diagram.
Does this work, or do you want to figure one?
Uh, that one will work, that's good. So in the packet, it noted that some of the open space was rooftop decks, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding. And I'm reading this correctly, which of these green spaces are rooftop decks and which ones are not, which ones are ground level? Could you particularly point out the ones that are ground level and not elevated?
Yes, and some of them you can't really see, actually, let me, let me go to. Just a full overhead, there, there we go. I'm not sure, can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, so this is rooftop. Down here, building D, upside down L, that's a plaza, that's ground level. Over here, I'm building D, this is rooftop. And then the whole area between building D and building E is shown as a kind of park slash plaza area. And then building E here, which is a student housing. All of these areas that are kind of in the. I guess crooks of the building or bends of the building, these triangle spaces.
Elbows.
Elbows, yeah, with the multi-use path going through, all of these are at grade. And then the two that have the brown surrounding them, those are both rooftop, so I think that's indicating kind of railings. And then. Yeah, I mean, the rest is essentially kind of landscape setbacks surrounding the buildings.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And then. I think this diagram will work for my next question as well. So in the memo, it talks about staff feels that there are height transitions that are needed. Can you point out if you have thought about this in, in this level of specific geographic detail? Where you think those height transitions are needed, which edges would need to come down?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I think the staff feels that along baseline, so the. The building frontages that are directly facing the one and two story buildings across the street. So kind of the. The northeast corner of building A. Building C. Basically just creating a slightly lower elevation along baseline.
Okay, so specifically along baseline, was that the only area that staff was, had a, a thought about making a transition of height?
Yes, I think so. I mean, the, the transition. Criteria kind of speak to surrounding neighborhoods, so generally. You know, it's, it's on the border of the site that is closest to those surrounding neighborhoods. So, yes, along baseline really is, is mainly, I think, where we were thinking of.
Okay, and, and your mouse was on that building that's kind of behind the baseline crossing shopping center? I'm assuming that that's not an area, since it's behind a shopping center, that you would need height transition, or were you including that?
No, I mean, we didn't specify. I think in general, staff just felt that the mass seemed a bit big considering. The immediate kind of context across the street to the north. So I think we would. You know, we didn't specify in our comments exactly which buildings we thought needed to come down. I don't think we usually get into that level of detail in concept plan, but. I think in general, the, the thought was where there are existing. One or two story buildings to make buildings adjacent to those spots. Kind of transition to that scale.
Okay, thank you, and I'll have some thoughts about those later, but I'll save them for, for comments. Next question, how tall is that retaining wall on U S thirty six and that ramp? That's right behind the, the edge of the property there.
Yeah, so now I can show some of the pictures that I got. So, it's not, I'm not exactly sure. Precisely how tall it is, but I think it's about twenty five to thirty feet at its tallest point. And it gradually goes up, so I'm going to just show some pictures here to illustrate. So this is looking from Cafe Mexicali with the retaining wall shown there, so you can see right there, the retaining wall is above the, the first floor. This is also looking basically from the baseline crossing parking lot. The whole site is, so on the, the western portion of the site is. Basically below the grade of the highway for the entire time, so this is looking from. The Dark Horse essentially right where the highway starts to go up. So there, it's only probably eight feet or so. This is all the way back by the Broker Inn, but even there, you can see there's. An existing kind of retaining wall, and then a berm, and then the path, and then another berm, and then the road. This is showing, looking across the street, looking across baseline to the south. So that's the tallest point of the retaining wall that you can see there where the, the very large berm is. You can see it's almost level with the top of Mexicali. Which is a two story building, so. The applicant may have specific numbers, I'm not sure if they've measured it or not, but just based on. You know, visual data, I would say that it's twenty five, possibly thirty feet tall.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's perfect. I love the images. Thank you. That's so helpful. I, I did do a site visit, but maybe not everybody was able to do that. This is my neighborhood, by the way, like I, this is a place I know well, so it's good to have the visuals. Thank you. And my last question, if I may, for Chandler. So on page one eighty two of the packet, you have a statement that says staff encourages the applicant to rethink the project in terms of the maximum number of units that could be. Provided. Because of a bunch of factors. Some of those factors I get, but I had questions about. You talk about meeting city access and transportation standards and floodplain development requirements. Can you explain a little bit why city access and transportation standards and floodplain development requirements would, in staff's opinion. Require fewer units of residential?
I think, you know, the, the general feeling among staff was that. With the detail that we'd been given. The project seemed to be. Trying to fit quite a bit into the existing space and that, as shown. And that, as shown, the number of access points that they are saying that they need to serve these buildings, which are predominantly residential, would be very difficult for us to accommodate. Um, we had concerns about, you know, traffic impacts. Um, safety impacts, floodplain, et cetera. They would, they'd be required to get a, both a clomer and a lomer um, and redirect the floodplain, which they have thought about and which I'm sure they're going to talk about in their presentation as well. Um. But really, the feeling was just that it seemed like this was um, not, maybe not ten pounds in a five-pound sack. Um, but maybe, maybe seven pounds in a five-pound sack. Um, so, so the way that was um, phrased, you know, I, I guess I shouldn't have phrased it that way in terms of um, number of units, but um, basically just saying that overall, um, if this number of access points are required to serve a development of this size, that the development should likely be smaller because the existing street infrastructure surrounding the site currently would not be able to handle um, that type of access configuration.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know your rationale on that. Appreciate it. That's the end of my questions.
Hi Chandler, um. I'm going to follow up with Kurt's questions about private and public streets. Um. Uh, it seems as though uh, I'm, I'm clear and with all the advantages of having uh, public streets and dedicated city right-of-way, so that there's not future issues with, like you say, maintenance, access, et cetera. So I'm all about uh, that. However, we have some recent examples of both where I think a private street was able to be designed much more creatively and with um, I think better, uh, a better product in terms of helping us try to reach uh, some transportation and climate goals. And I'm referring to uh, what I think is a private street and the applicant can probably correct me here if I'm wrong. Um, uh, thirty-fourth street between Meredith and Bluff. It's a street I like to use as an example often as really kind of a new and very different sort of street cross-section. Uh, it's just south of Valmont. Um, so that's a private street, I believe. Is that correct Chandler or applicant?
I'm not sure.
Okay, anyway, let me, let me get to the heart of the question. Do we ever allow variation from the D C S for a street? That would eventually, do we, can we negotiate variation from the D C S for a street cross-section that wouldn't meet the D C S but would eventually become a public street?
I believe that we can. Um, I would probably like to follow up with engineering and get you a written response. Um, and I apologize if it looks like I'm rolling my eyes or something. I have two screens right now. One is just above the other one. So I have, I'm looking up at my big screen, which has other information on it. Um.
I, I interpreted it as, as the usual response I get when I ask questions, but not from you, but for everyone.
So I can, so um, I, I believe that we can make modification of the D C S. If you don't mind, I would just like to read um, Edward's response to the overall question about whether we decide um, if we prefer a new street to be public or private. So there are several issues to look at when considering if it is a public street or a private drive. The first is to look at the subdivision standards in nine twelve twelve that prohibit private streets. Next is to look at the function to determine if it is a street or a driveway. This inclu- this includes, is the frontage needed to meet lot standards? Does it serve multiple parcels under different ownership? Does it provide connections to other properties or streets? Does it provide through access to users beyond the lots served? Trade-offs relate to ownership, operations and maintenance. When it is a private street, the city has limited or no operations or maintenance responsibility, but also limited to no control over how it is operated and the condition. When it serves what appears to be a public need that creates public expectations of the city that we may not be able to meet. Reasons for development to have private streets include building to a lesser standard than the city requires for a public street, which lowers initial costs, but tends to create costs and problems in the longer term. If it is a private driveway, we want it constructed to appear as such, including using drive cuts rather than intersections. Um. So it sounds like, I mean, that was really just more, more of an answer to whether we want it to be public or private. And in this case, I think with all those considerations, like I said before, we want it to be public. As far as modifications to the D C S standards to allow for, you know, more um, creative street layout or something. Um, that I would want to um, follow up with engineering and get you a response later on, because I, I'm not sure of the answer.
So it is possible to modify the D C S. We've done it in the past. Um, you know, I think there needs to be a level of comfort in meeting the site review criteria. Um, I think from a transportation safety perspective, you know, there needs to be a level of comfort, but it, it's possible.
Okay, so the follow-on question to that is similar in the sense of we, here we have a proposed development that has seemingly obvious access issues. And, and people have asked about these access issues. So, but the developer doesn't control access on, on baseline or on thirtieth. And the developer can't say, I, I'm going to build a signalized intersection at twenty, at the equivalent of twenty-ninth street. So, but the developer says, gee, under site review criteria and with approval, I can do X number of units, have X number of people here, have X trip count. Where does, uh, where does the city and how, how do we negotiate? Uh, prior to site review, a, an agreement to create a signalized intersection and at whose expense? And, you know, how do we go about this? Because there is a little bit of a chicken or the egg thing here uh, between creating a signalized intersection and providing good access for an appropriate number of, of units. And we can't, we don't want to uh, restrict a housing supply based on kind of a, uh, uh, an unfortunate condition on the current streetscape.
So there, there is um, a city C I P project that's planning uh, crossing improvements on baseline this year. Um, so there would be an opportunity for the applicant or the developer to reach out and get involved in those discussions. Um. Whether we would prefer it to be after they've submitted for site review or prior to site review. Um, I can't really say, but I would imagine that we, we would at least start having that discussion with them um, prior to site review if necessary.
And I think ultimately, um, it's really going to depend on the traffic impact study that's submitted as part of the site review. That is going to dictate whether or not we'd signalize that, that intersection, whether or not the impacts would justify it. Um, so I think that'll probably be our best first glimpse and uh, um, what that might look like.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, applicant. You'll have fifteen minutes. Oh, you're not Bill. I'm sorry, okay.
True.
And can you guys run the clock for me so I can see it? And please give your name and et cetera. Oh.
And I can at least start to save time for everybody.
We haven't started, we haven't started fifteen minutes yet.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have a lot of visual requests. I've seen.
This is truly hybrid, like you're here and you're online.
And I'll start by at least introducing myself since I'm not Bill.
Let's just make sure that they have the tech stuff, so we don't waste any of your time. Yeah, no, I'm looking, I'm waiting for, yeah, I had, that was at zero before. I just don't want to start the clock till their text is working. Okay. Okay.
That would work just fine.
We ready?
I'm ready.
All right, go ahead.
Let's start the time. Bill and I are going to split the fifteen minutes, so I'll try to keep it brief. I will say one thing, just since there was so much. Uh, I'm sorry, my name is Andy Bush and I'm with Morgan Creek Ventures. And um, I'll tell you a little bit more about us as I use my four or five minutes. But um, and I am going to say one thing about access, since there's been so much discussion. We've developed a dozen buildings in Boulder Junction as part of it at thirtieth and Pearl. And, and I think it's important to realize that that whole area is really served by two public access points. So um, as we get into site review and discussion, we'll obviously go into the detail of that and the transportation studies and making sure that we support those access points. Um, thank you for hearing us tonight as part of it. And um, w- we didn't play a numbers game to try and get people out, but we did get people, ask people to talk if they wanted to. And so there'll be people who talk about it. And obviously, the majority of letters that you got in support um, came in from people who think it's a good idea. Um, mostly, I think we just wanted to get your input tonight and we want to hear what staff has to say. I'd love to hear what folks in the neighborhood have to say. And, and the reason I wanted to slide up is because I want people to think about what is it we're talking about? I mean, it's really a, an old seventies shopping center that's a hundred percent paid and impervious. Um. And just think about that and look up every once in a while while we talk and, and kind of keep that in mind as part of it. I want to talk about four things and I'll do it in four minutes, hopefully. One is the Williams family who owns um, the center. And they're really three generations here in Boulder. Um, not only do they develop this shopping center, but they've made significant donations to C U. They actually developed Martin Acres and the, it's called the Park East Neighborhood as part of it. And they built in Gun Barrel and their desire is kind of as a legacy, see the redevelopment of the shopping center. So I think we're really lucky to have a local family and local ownership that wants to see the transition and, and this as a family legacy. Um, our team, Morgan Creek Ventures is a urban infill developer focused on sustainability and urbanism. Um, I founded it twenty-three years ago here in Boulder. I've lived here for fifty. And Bill and I have done a dozen um, all-electric, highly sustainable buildings that produce about forty or fifty percent of their own power. I think it's the largest kind of sustainable portfolio in Colorado. And, and we focus on urban infill. And so I think we understand urban context and scale. And it's worth mentioning that um, however many pounds of whatever we're putting in whatever bag, the F I R we're proposing is one point nine. Um, the F I R out uh, on what's being done um, at thirtieth and or twenty-eighth, the and diagonal is about one point eight. Um, Boulder Junction and that neighborhood is about the same. So what we're really talking about is kind of trying to urbanize those neighborhoods in the way that we've been talking about doing them and have done very successfully, I think, here. Um, so uh, put in context, kind of F I R and, and pounds and, and bags and stuff as part of it. I think from a landscape standpoint, um, we've done very urban infill projects. And Bill will show some diagrams about landscape and trying to look at what's on the ground plane and what we're trying to move up and how we're trying to transition things, but we'll um, exceed city standards and create great streets and, and great plazas and great courtyards as part of it. Um. Is this a good location for housing and retail that serves the neighborhood and community? I can't think of one that's any better with the exception of the fact that um, it's surrounded by highway thirty-six on one side. And as we talked about with those big elevation changes, it creates some issues. And we've got an arterial street on the other side, um, and hundred-and-fifty-foot towers on the other side. And it does transition to a single-family neighborhood, but that transition is largely made through the student rental of those single-family units on the northeast corner of that intersection. Um, and so I think the real question is one of mix and scale. And I think we've demonstrated and hopefully will demonstrate that we can create the kind of scale and transitions. And I think some of the comments that Chandler and others have made about looking at baseline and the transition on baseline, I think we're open to. And the same thing, we want a really vibrant retail area. And the question is, can we create retail um, that's compact enough that it's successful? Those two neighborhood centers haven't done so great over the last fifteen or twenty years, but I think we can do something really cool. I don't want to do more than is appropriate, but we've talked about, I think seventy-five or eighty thousand square feet. There may be a couple of opportunities to do a little bit more. And finally, I'll talk about the elephant or the dark horse in the room. Um. The dark horse has been there for a long time and the Williams family has had a forty-year relationship with them and the ownership group as part of it. And we have a memorandum of understanding that really talks about the fact that, you know, this is a forty-year relationship and it's been a collaborative one. And, and the reality is the family's been subsidizing them for um, fifteen or twenty years. And I think we're open to looking at a new site and trying to find a dark horse two-point-O that evolves at the right scale and the right size. And I've been involved in building things that you could actually move the significant components and catalog them and recreate them. And it wouldn't be the same thing. It would be different. Um, but you know, there's nostalgia. I kind of remember Winita's and Potter's and I love the Blue Note. Um, I don't know if a lot of people even remember the Blue Note, but things transition and change and I'd like to see us create a transition here. I'll pass out the memorandum of understanding while Bill's setting up. And I'd be glad at some point during your question answer to read it into the record so that everyone who's going to talk tonight can understand it too, instead of waiting to find out about it when they get it online later. Um, but it took me two and a half minutes to read, so I wasn't going to take up.
Right, Bill, just so you know, you're at eight fifty-six.
Thanks. All right, so I'm the urban planning side of this. The site is a parking lot. There's absolutely no um, provision made for anybody on foot or on bike or any kind of alt mode unless you drove there. So it's a broken part of our urban fabric as a community. Um, Bill Hocke, Urban Architecture, sorry about that. Um, so uh, trying to make the technology work. So there's the site. Chandler already talked about it. One thing to note is that we have thousands of students walking through the site every day. Um, that is an energy that is hard to find and it's pretty cool. And if we can use it to make a really functioning neighborhood, that'd be great. But right now, um, they're either walking through a parking lot or a, a long thirty-six. It's not a very pleasant experience. Which is doubly made challenging because it is really, really well-served by alt modes, bike lanes, bus. And this is one of the components of neighborhood centers where we're in the B V C P where it talks about, it really should have great alt mode service. It's great right up to the site. It's like the opposite problem that we normally have. Normally, we can make the site great, but it doesn't tie to anything. The site's terrible and it ties to everything. So it's something we can fix. We start with this. This is an completely asphalted site with some buildings in the middle. It's the opposite of what you want from an urban form standpoint. And across the country, you're starting to see people reclaim these areas. We did it diagonal plaza together as a community. And that was also a neighborhood center. That was about one point eight eight F I R. It was fifty-five feet. So it's very similar to what's being proposed here in terms of the, the restitution of the urban fabric, maybe is, is a good way to look at it. The streets have been a big topic of conversation. Please ask about them. The blue one is proposed to be public. The other street accesses are not important. We want to meet the transportation requirements and work with what your recommendations are and what transportation needs to keep the site safe. For example, like this one that's already existent up here, perhaps that's emergency vehicle only and doesn't have public access. You know, there's things that we can do like that to reduce this number down to just the streets and the drives needed to serve the parcel. So please, let's, let's talk about what the right thing to do is. And we don't have any ulterior motives. We want to satisfy transportation staff. Once you have the street layout, we've broken down, like Chandler said, we've broken down the city grid, the super block into something that's walkable, permeable. We can make outdoor space in it. We want to bring the blue, the buildings up to the street to make those outdoor rooms and plazas and, and urban places that people find really welcoming and inviting about um, really nice, nice neighborhoods and communities. And then uh, we surround that by open space. I'll talk more about that later in the interest of time. And the parking is entirely contained within the buildings. We will also have to have parking underneath the student building, but none of it's at surface except for a very small amount on the north side of the site up here. Up here, which is uh, buying the new sprouts. So there's a bit of parking there predominantly to allow the flood um, to be made, remain unchanged, but also to give some public parking there. Everything else is hidden so that the urban fabric is preserved. And that leaves us with this sort of fine grid, which is what you want to see. It's really interesting. Look at the grid of the, of the finished product here and the streets and the sidewalks and the urban places. And then compare that to what's north across the street. So what's north has to change too, eventually, to make this a really good neighborhood. So we want that to be the beginning of that part of that pattern that we need for the, for the property. And what it does is it takes this, which looks small and asphalted and inhumane, and turns it into something that's much more attractive that you can actually picture yourself standing in. And it's interesting because when you actually put in the streets, you start to see the scale of the ten acres. Until then, it just feels like a parking lot. Until then, it just feels like a parking lot, which is really interesting. So this is another thing. So I talked about the students moving through the site. The southern, the bottom of the page, that diagonal rust line is the is the point of access right now. So the students would leave Williams Village Towers and the six-story buildings to the south of it. They'd come along this path, right, walking right along the retaining wall on 36 and then go underneath the underpass and into the to the university. Or they walk right through the parking lot, which they do, and it's not awesome. But we want to propose to utilize that energy. It's really, really difficult, as we know, in a mixed, in a non-mixed-use project, even in a mixed-use project, to create traffic on the street at all times of day. It's just hard to do. Students are awesome because they don't have classes from eight to half five. They have classes at various times of the day, so they're active as a group all the time. Or maybe they're active after 11, but the point is they're active all the time, right? Because of the different schedules. So you always have that, those people on the street, it's a great base for a community. So by running this alternate multi-use path through the site, which is the zigzag line above, we get to have the students on the site supporting the uses. And this comes back to those uses that we talked about. So the what we really, what we found is that this site, if you know it well, it has struggled to keep people in business here. There are a few uses that are have been there a long time. The dark horse, which you'll see from the letter, has had, has been paying half rent for a long time and they're a month-to-month lease. So please ask us about the dark horses, a lot that has gone into trying to keep them on the site at all, let alone with the redevelopment. So but the other businesses have turned over historically and have struggled and underperformed. The reason for that is, the only reason you come to this site is if you get in your car and drive here, there is no reason to come any other, there's no like incidental traffic, there's no foot track, nobody lives here. All the students have meal plans, so they don't populate the restaurants. So we need to bring people to the site to keep this commercial healthy. So what we did was we said, okay, let's concentrate all the commercial on this street right here with a dark horse in pink at the end. And by the way, there's other restaurants planned, we would want to keep all of them, including the Dairy Queen even, if possible, and they would just be in the blue. But dark horse is special. So we identified it at the end of this plaza as a special use in pink, that's where we'd love it to go. And this street becomes, gets all the energy of that, of all the new users on the site. But that's not critical, we just thought that could better support this commercial because it's struggled so much. We did this option after talking with planning board, with planning staff and hearing the community. This is also possible. This could be the commercial on the site if if the staff, the community and planning board feels that this is more appropriate. The benefit is that there's more.
What could be the commercial?
In the blue.
Okay.
So the difference is we would, we would change some of these spots from yellow, you know, from this potential hotel and some of the residential to the blue. And that would create more commercial on site. Essentially, most of the first floor would be commercial. The downside would be maybe there isn't enough financial support for those. The upside would be it's more in line with the comp plan with the neighborhood, neighborhood center. So I think we're open to either, we'd love your feedback on what makes more sense. Just wanted to throw that out. Also, as Chandler mentioned, the architecture we're not set on, we know it has to have a great first floor, first 12 to 14 feet. We think it should be modern, we'd love to hear your thoughts on style. And the same with true store landscape. In these pictures, we've shown two different kinds. One is really geometric, that kind of matches the geometric streets and the buildings. The other kind is much more sinuous and that's kind of what we've shown on the open space plan. So it's a juxtaposition of the kind of the natural versus the urban. Again, your thoughts on that would be very helpful, along with staffs and neighbors and everybody else's. You've seen, as we've kind of, you've looked through architectural character sketches, really the intent is not to show building architecture, we haven't designed it yet. It's really just to explain that this is a very different place than what's there now. And you've seen some of this placemaking and other projects around Boulder, that's the intent. And these little caught plazas, like you can see here, these little, these urban places are a really great place for the community to interact and the people to go back and forth and meet each other and develop that community. It's all skip right to height. This is not horizontally correct, but it is vertically to scale. So the street, 36, five-lane highway, 25 feet about tall, 20 to 30 feet at the retaining wall. Our proposal in the middle and then the towers on the right. And that's literally the way it lines up across the site. So keep in mind that the site review criteria have us look at what's around. The neighborhood center says we're supposed to transition. Diagonal Plaza, it's all 55 feet and it's transitioning down to what's around it. The opposite is true here, we're actually transitioning up to the towers. We're transitioning up to the Balkan mass of the five-lane highway that's 30 feet above the ground. And our site is here in blue, so red is above 55 feet, blue is 55 feet. Remember, the entire east side of 36, as you head north, is all 55-foot tall students, student buildings. And everything to the north is zoned right now, 30, about 35 to 40 feet by right. I have like two slides to get through, if that's okay, I'll be very quick. We can talk more about any of this stuff and questions. The flood came up, so we have designed, I can talk more about this really briefly. We've designed the street plan, not about, just about urban placemaking, but also about the flood. So you can see that the streets follow very closely the way the flood currently moves through the site. So it doesn't require much grading to modify that just a little bit so it fits outside of the buildings. This is showing the 100-year flood plain, which is the regulatory start for a flood plain. The open space, there was some question about what was above ground and what was at grade? The bright green is at grade, the dark green is above ground. There is a new site review criteria that we're all just learning, the site review criterias. But there's a new one that says, if you're in an area where there's views, you, it is strongly suggested that you put at least some open space up in the air so that the residents can, and the users of the community can take advantage of those views. So we are reading the site review criteria to require us to move some of the site, open space up. And then, oh boy, now I've done it. Lastly, parking, there's some street parking, the orange is the hidden parking inside the building, there would be other parking under the student. This is important, I think I only have one more after this. The light blue and the medium blue are the first chunk of work, that's phase one and phase two, it all happened at the same time. Purple is future. So the idea was all of the commercial that's currently on site would be preserved, we'd add to it a little bit, go from 65,000 to 75 or 80,000 of commercial or more if you choose. But there's hotel on the site. We know it's not allowed, but if the planning board council really strongly desired it, we have a spot for it. If you don't desire it, it could be dealt with in the third phase of purple, we'd have to come back for another site review amendment to do anyway, so there's plenty of time to figure that out. And then lastly, that's it. So thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Okay, we'll take clarifying questions from the board members. Can you take down that slide so I can see ML and George? While we're waiting for that to come, if you came in late and you have and you want to speak, you have to sign up over at that table and you'll have two minutes when we get to comments. Okay, who has questions, clarifying questions for Bill? Oh, look at that, you have those extra two minutes. Okay. We're so close. I'll get to ML.
Thank you, and your colleague, remind me your name?
Andy.
Say again? Andy, Bill and Andy, thank you for that presentation, very informative, appreciate it. I have just a couple of questions.
Sure.
So in the applicant statement, you talk about an amphitheater and you also talk about having food trucks, markets or events in the parking area. Can you show us where the amphitheater is and talk about that a little bit, what your intentions are there? And also talk about how you envision that parking space by Sprouts would function for food trucks, markets or events?
Sure. Just give me a second here. Okay, so this area right here that sits between the student housing and this potential dark horse location is really important to us. The, there was visioning done at the outset by the owner. They've been working on this for a long time, they own it, they want it to be really special. By the way, the very first thing that they said when we walked in was we have to figure out how to keep the dark horse on site somehow. So, I mean, this is not an afterthought. So we decided that this amphitheater could be the kind of the nexus of the community, like this community heart, and it sits right here. And it hap, we located it right where the floodway is, no water went over that during the big rain, but it is on paper a floodway, so need to be open anyway. So the idea is we can put the dark horse there, we can put food trucks there, it could be outdoor events and concerts, kind of like the Belly Up in Aspen, you know, that kind of thing. The student housing across the way is really cool because again, students are there all the time. At least some students are in their common space at all times. So that first floor could be that common space that students have. And then that whole area would be charged sort of at all hours of the day is the idea. And so this is a little bit of a rendering, looking into that, there's no building design yet at all. It's just this idea that there's this plaza with catenary lighting, places for food trucks, all that kind of stuff. So that answers that part. And then briefly, your other question, which is up here. Again, the area, this, this area here is, it's not a ton of parking, it's a little bit of parking, like the idea that if you think you might be able to park there, you'll drive there and then you can't, so you park in the garage. But since it could be designed almost like a Warner, it could be closed off and you could do farmers markets and events and food trucks there, sprouts being more of a community market. It would be something that they could sponsor and support and be right on baseline so everybody could see this community event. So that's the idea. And again, it's early, so we're open to thoughts, concepts, you know, good idea, bad idea, other ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I have just one more.
Okay.
Can you take that down just so I can see our other colleagues?
Yeah. So in the packet, it, it said that staff encouraged you folks, the applicant, to provide additional information on what discussions, if any, have been had with existing tenants regarding possible retention or relocation to new space within the project. You've talked about that a little bit, I just wanted to invite you to talk about it more if you have more to say.
Yeah, it's been, it's been quite extensive, I'm going to turn it over to Andy who's been heading that up.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, this is, I was talking to somebody the other day and they said, this is a chess game, right? Not a checkers game, because there's also the dimension of time here. We've got existing tenants, we've got master leases, we've got lots of different users and we have to build this in, over a period of time. And it's realistic, it's that folks are going to have to close and reopen or shuffle and move. And it's not easy because I've tried to do it before. So I don't want to suggest that it's an easy thing to do. But the ownership is open to having all of the tenants that are there ultimately be there in the long run. There really isn't a bad tenant in there that doesn't have some relationship to students, you know, for whether it's Dairy Queen or Mose or the barbecue place or Sprouts or the dark horse. Our preliminary discussions with Sprouts have been that they're willing to close for two years if they can move and be over on the corner. And I think the owner of that master lease may talk as part of the public comment. The dark horse, we've also said, you know, we'd love to find, the dark horse doesn't need to be the size that it is. They couldn't sustain that from a rent standpoint and they don't really utilize that most of the time. But part of putting them on that plaza space in the outdoor is they do during games and other stuff, have big spillover potential requirements that they'd love to have in more of a semi-public space. So we've looked at timing, we're looking at their different needs for kind of next generation of business. And there's no reason and we would love to have all of the tenants stay there. There's a practical reality that probably all of them won't. And because I don't want to come up and say, all this is going to happen. And Dave, who owns the dark horses, 70 years old, he's my age or a little bit older. So there's also generations of businesses here that just, you know, you have to transition ownership to the next team in your business to make some of these businesses go on. But I think the most important point is we're open to that. And I think if folks are with Sprouts or the dark horse are on tonight and talk, or if not, in future communications, you know, this is a conversation and it's one that is a chess game. But it's an interesting chess game because all of those, you know, I wish we could buy McDonald's, that's probably the only one I'd close, but we don't have McDonald's. So the rest of them, we think, could be really good fit. And again, if it comes to the point in public comment or something, feel free to read the MOU with the dark horse, because I know a lot of people have been talking about, save the dark horse. I think the Williams family has done more to save the dark horse in the last 15 or 20 years than any group and they're still excited about trying to do that.
Okay, thank you. ML?
Thank you so much. So I've got a number of questions for the applicant, let me see where. So you've got two kinds of residences that you're creating, one is for students and one is for a market rate. How many students, and when I look at the square footage, they were about the same square footage. And you were providing one parking space per unit in your parking layout or parking proposal. So my question is, how many students do you see per unit?
Yeah, that's, so loaded question. First of all, I don't, you know, we've said, hey, this is residential square footage, this is student square footage, this is market rate. I don't think we've done the math to figure out or done the design to figure out exactly this many beds or exactly this many units. So that's one of the things we want to ask you about. It's likely to be, say, three and four-bed student units, just because that works pretty well. That's, that's people like to pair up in triples and quads and things like that, but it wouldn't be exclusively that. And, you know, the idea for parking in terms of asking how many parking spaces per unit. Originally, we had this idea that the parking garage was going to be the parking, we were going to have a fairly substantial parking reduction and that we were going to share that residential commercial parking in the parking garage. Because you can do this daytime, nighttime shift, right? The residents typically park in the evening and night hours, the, the commercial parks during the day, so you can overlap that parking. But the reality is, when we really got into the student housing to understand that, what you have is not so much a car use problem, but you have a car storage problem. Students show up with cars and then they, they leave them somewhere. So that's why I said, I'm fairly comfortable saying we will need to do subsurface parking for car storage for the students under the student housing building.
Right, so I, I think you've answered my number one question here, which is, out of those 285 student units, you could potentially, and that's at three per unit, you could potentially have 855 students living in those buildings, right? Three?
Yeah, that's, that's probably.
Times 200, so that's a lot of, a lot of people on the site. So that, that's just one of my questions. Following up with that is. So if we end up with 855 students and however many residents based on the regular apartments. And I think from the numbers that I, that we got earlier, the amount of services that currently exist on the site, you're proposing more, but it's not like double or, or triple. It's just, I don't remember what percentage more. So my question is, how you're adding over 1,000 people to the site as residents? How are the services that will support? Where will the services that will support this so that it doesn't become a car-dependent development?
Yeah.
Right now, we've got the amount of services and there's no additional residents, right? Right now, there aren't any residential on site. So we're bringing in a significant number of people.
Yeah.
And not adding, you know, that many more services. Am I to understand from the conversation we've had that those number of additional residents on the site might make this economically viable for the businesses that have been struggling on that site? And so, anyway, I think you understand my question.
I do, and I can be, and I can be brief. Yeah, I think that you're, you hit the nail on the head. You know, we've done Steel Yards, we've done, you know, 30 Pearl, we've done some other developments. And what we found is it's surprisingly hard to support commercial with just the units on the site, no matter how many units you put on. So we are, I'll just say, I am nervous that if we increase beyond, say, that 75, 80,000 square foot level of commercial, that they would be supported even with the additional units on site. That said, we did, it might be possible to do that. And I think that's a question that we would ask you to take up and give us your feedback on. So this was the original proposal that we submitted and this is the 75, 77,000, I think it's 77,000 square feet of commercial, which is shown here. But this is an alternate that we've worked up after talking with staff. It shows, you know, a good bit more commercial and this is probably in the 120,000 square foot range, and I'm guessing, so please don't quote me on that number. But if this feels more appropriate to planning board, then I think we would explore that pretty hard to figure out how to get that kind of commercial on the site and how to, to find users that would make that financially viable. So, and I'll stop the show so you can, everybody can see each other. But yeah, I think that's, that's feedback that we would really like. And then lastly, I do think I feel better about supporting the commercial when it's more concentrated. So I think that's the trade-off. Do we want a commercial that we're sure is going to be viable? Do we want more commercial? So I think that's the trade off. Do we want a commercial that we're sure is going to be viable? Do we want more commercial that might be a little harder to support? But, um, open to your thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, um, for that clarification answer. I think I have one more question. Um. Phasing. So you're proposing three phases on the project. And so my question is, it looks like, um, it looks like you will deconstruct only per phase and the rest of the site will continue functioning during, um, phases. And it looks like number one phase is you build a student housing before any of the commercial. Is that correct?
I'm going to turn it over to Andy. The intention is that phase one and two are a bit more simultaneous than that, but I'll pull up the phasing method.
And, and, and I would start by saying, we don't totally know yet. But the, to do phase one and to do any of this, we have to, um, I'm sorry, to do any of this, we probably have to take Sprouts building down. So that would be the first thing to be taken down. And then we would start on the main roadways because we'd need the main roadway to baseline and we'd need the, we have to do all the flood work as part of the first phase. So that park would be part of the first phase, the main roadway coming down and the piece across in front of baseline for all of the flood work. And then really the idea is to build the student housing and the second phase at the same time and to be building Sprouts so that it could open two years later about the same time the student housing would open. So the real phase that's really being talked about in the future is the purple phase. We've talked, we've, we've called them phase three. It's really more parcel identification almost than anything else, but the intent is to do phase one and two simultaneously.
And I would be remiss, I, I should add that staff, a lot of this is very technical and staff will have a lot to say about how it's phased and what part it goes in. So I should defer a lot of that to staff as we go through the process.
Thank you so much. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay. And I just have one question. What's your guarantee that it's actually going to be some student housing and some market housing? Non-student housing? I mean, is it possible that you'll end up saying, you know what? We're just going to make it all student housing?
Wow, that's a great question. And I'm like, as you say that I'm ripping through the code in my head to figure out what could be put in the development agreement to, to require that. So I will say this. We don't have any problem with you putting something in development agreement to require that. So I think I just defer to Charles.
And I think we're open to trying to address that as part of site review development agreement. So I think we could do it there because we've done kind of similar things before. Whether it's affordable, we did the first pilot affordable commercial project over at 30th and Pearl, and we did that through the development agreement. So I don't see why we couldn't do this through the development agreement also.
And, and Charles was looking at Lauren, in case there was a legal question.
I, I think it's ultimately more of a legal question.
Yeah, we'd want to look into it once we're writing up the development agreement and see what's legal under our code.
Okay, great. And is the, uh, the presumed market rate housing rentals?
I don't think that's known yet. Um, we have discussed some for sale, but I, we don't have an answer to that question.
All right. Uh, thank you. Is any other last questions? Uh, go ahead, Kurt.
Yeah, thanks. My first question is about the flood. So you're moving the flood plane or the, I don't know what, how to call it, where the, the water goes. You're moving it a little bit, right? To avoid that building F, it appears.
Yes.
I don't know if we can bring.
Yep, I'm on it.
It up.
Two seconds. Closing too many windows. Okay, that should pop up. Yeah.
Right. So I was a little confused by this because it seems like the, the, the diagrams, the colors are the same on the left and the right. But you're just showing they are the same because they're both the current.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So are you, is there anything that shows what the, that the post build like conveyance zone would be?
Not yet, just because we haven't talked to staff about it. But the intention is that the, the, the location and the amount of water at each property line would not change. So the only thing that's changing is on the site. It's not changing the flow up or downstream at all. And all it's doing is really moving that north, south channel, this one here. It's moving it slightly to the east. So the intention on this slide was just to show that it's, it was designed to be very similar and just with slight regrading that, that can be, I, I don't even want to say rechanalized because we're talking like two or three feet of difference here. That has been brought up by staff. I'm pointing to Chandler who's at home. So sorry. Um, that has been brought up by staff, and I think that would be one of the first follow up sets of, of meetings is to work through that. The, the project cannot come back to planning board until a clomer has been approved by the city. So city would have to sign off on the change before we can either even see you again.
And I should mention that Charlie from JBA did do the sections to show that we could do it essentially with those street sections that we've identified. So there's been preliminary engineering done on all.
Okay. And, and did you consider, I'm definitely not a flood expert. So I don't know what is possible. And this is the question that I didn't ask staff, but did you consider rerouting it so that the, that north, south flow would go all the way up to baseline? And not, not create this open area, the, what you're using as an open area for parking and so on.
Yeah, I think that if the feedback from planning board is it would be better to bring the, the building to the street, then we will work with staff. Staff owns, the city owns baseline. So we don't want to change a single drop in baseline unless the city says that's a good idea. So if you guys say bring the building to the street and staff thinks that there's a good way to do that, we'll do it.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, I lost my question. So go to somebody else.
I think you're it.
No, I doubt it.
Sorry, thought you'd already passed.
No.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Um, I, although I don't think I'll be long. Um, on, in your, uh, in the packet, you have a radius, an aerial view with a radius showing some transportation corridors and bus stops, et cetera. There are two proposed RTD stations. Who, who, who is proposing that? Is that RTD or you or, uh, or what? And, and are those for real? I, I'm, I'm just curious about those.
Those are straight off the city transportation map, so I should defer to staff on that.
Okay.
And if staff, if it's helpful, I can share that slide quick.
And that may be like a pre-COVID transportation master plan in need of an update. Anyway, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they're just straight out of the, um, transportation master plan.
Okay. All right. Um, in your market housing.
Yes.
Do you think, would, do you have a target AMI or put it in a more real term, would an adjunct professor at CU be able to afford a one bedroom in your market rate housing with 30% of their income going to rent?
So I would be lying if I told you how much an adjunct professor, professor at CU makes.
Surprisingly small amount, but anyway.
Um, I have taught there in a while. Um, okay. So, uh, the, the intent from the very beginning of the conversations, the intent was to create a, a really diverse group of economic, well, a diverse economic group of, of residents. And so, you know, we don't have, like I said, we haven't designed any units. We don't know what they are, but it's pretty important to the health of the neighborhood to have lower like workforce housing. I think there would also be like, you know, for lack of a better way to describe it, like the penthouse unit. So the idea is that there's a strata and that folks of varying economic backgrounds would be able to live there. When you look at that many units and, and having that absorbed into the market, there's a reality there. If you just brought on a bunch of high end units, it's going to take a really, really long time to get them leased up initially. So the obvious market is CU employees and that has been discussed a lot. So the, the intent would be to get CU employees in there, but I would be, it would, it would not be accurate to say that's a hundred percent of the market rate units.
Okay. Um, last question. Do you have a rough percentage of open space that is linear, especially along 36 or along the streets versus nonlinear plaza, uh, gathering area amphitheater sort of percentage?
That's a great question. Um, you're just trying to look at like, what is occupiable space versus what is more passive like tree lawns and things like that? It's a good question and I, um, I don't. I probably should, but I would say that based on past projects and what we're seeing here, you know, I would say that probably 50% of the open space is in plaza areas. 25% is linear and 25% is up in the air. And that's a really, really rough number. But again, your thoughts on that would be helpful as we move forward.
I'll have thoughts on that during.
I'm sure you will.
All right.
Okay, that's it.
Your final questions?
Yeah, I think I just had one more question, which is about the design of that, uh, the, the student building. I think it's building E.
Yes.
The, the one that goes all over.
Yeah.
Uh.
With the elbows.
With the elbows. So that shows a number of, or not a number, it shows two ground level open space areas.
Yep.
On the west side, southwest side.
Yep.
Along the highway. What was your thinking in putting them there? And do you think that that would actually be pleasant space? Or would it be better to have them more internal?
Uh, that's another really interesting question. So the broker in is on the site right now and it's about 15, 20 feet below the highway. And it's got that pool area back there. And that actually is a pretty pleasant space to be to the point where it's being kind of utilized as a, like a club to some extent. So people like it. The other thing that's along that, it's not just the highway, but it's also that bike path, which is the primary circulation for the Williams Towers and the, and the six story buildings that I don't know the name of to the south to get to CU. So the idea was students like to be around students and the idea that you could be in those open spaces and be connected to this, this string of movement back and forth seems really attractive to students. And also, you know, students by virtue of the fact that they're not going to be there for more than three or four years and, uh, they're kind of, that's a phrase, if it's too, it's too loud or too old, um, they, they seem to like the energy. So, um, the, the folks that we talked to that specialize in it, which is not me, feel like that would be a really energizing thing for the student housing. So that's what we've thought about so far.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Um, I'm going to make an executive decision. We'll take a five minute break. Uh, when we come back, uh, we'll start public comments. Again, if you haven't signed up, sign up over there and you'll each have two minutes to speak. Thank you. We'll be back. I don't have a, what time is it here? We'll be back at, uh, 7:53. All right, everybody. Uh, we're going to start. It's my understanding that a, our, uh, planning professor, Bill Shutkin is here and some of you may be his students. So, uh, welcome, welcome to city planning 101. If you're students of Bill Shutkins, raise your hands. Only one, oh, a couple. All right. Only one, oh, a couple. All right. Okay, folks, so just, uh, we have, um, uh, lots of people signed up and, uh, uh, at least 56 people listening online. I don't know how many hands are up online. So this is, could be a very long evening. I want you, just to remind you that what we're discussing here, and then we have to discuss amongst ourselves. But we're not voting on anything tonight. We're not making any decisions tonight. All we're doing is giving feedback to the applicant, uh, on the proposal that's in front of us. And how we are, how we see it vis a vis the code and the Boulder Valley comp plan. So we're not voting on anything tonight. All right. So the first speaker is going to be Ken Farmer. And you will have two minutes, Mr. Farmer.
Thanks for, um, thanks for letting us come up here and give comment. I'm gonna try to avoid speaking too fast and going into auction mode. I live in southwest, uh, Martin Acres. I bark, I bicycle into this area all the time. So I've, I've been to ha- probably half the retail facilities here. I love the ideas of mixed use. I love the idea of affordable housing and I love the idea of revitalization. But I have some serious concerns about this proposal. One is that it's a, it's a net reduction in the land dedicated to local, um, serving businesses. And admittedly, the existing, the existing retail doesn't optimize, isn't well optimized for using the land either. But of course, this isn't the only possibility, what we looked at today. And having local, uh, local serving business is essential for people to walk, bike and bus, but rather than drive everywhere. It's essential as a part of our vision. And it, I think is essential if we're gonna enter into meaningful conversations about reducing parking requirements. Cause if we get rid of all the local serving business, then we're all just gonna be driving everywhere. And we're gonna need all those parking spots. I'm very concerned that, uh, a lot of the commercial space doesn't appear to happen until phase two and three. I'm concerned it may never actually emerge. The second category of concerns is that, uh, we might see this turn into, uh, almost no affordable housing or commercial space. We, Boulder doesn't really need a whole lot more luxury housing. I think every hu- luxury housing unit that we add at this point just digs us deeper into a hole. We really need that housing for a single school teacher with a child, something that he or she could afford. And we don't really need more luxury boutique, high end retail where you buy a $700 winter shell. You know, we really need affordable retail.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Your two minutes are up. It goes very fast, so I'll just be prepared.
Quick, sure, finish your, your thought. Statement, the most important is highway noise. Residents along, along Moorhead deal with, and it, deal with a tremendous amount of noise. It's extremely unhealthy. We know about that. These tall buildings are gonna reflect a lot more noise back. And I think that we should have a very serious noise study.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next, if I'm pronouncing this correctly, Guillaume Losri? Lossec.
Hi, my name is Guillaume Lossec. I am a research assistant at CU Boulder. I heard about the project a few months ago, and I'm here to voice my concerns regarding the destruction of dark horse to build student housing. So let me first make it clear, uh, since, uh, before I lived with my wife, rent represented 50% of my income. So I do see the value in affordable housing. However, I just wanna make sure that in this project, the housing will remain affordable. Also, uh, when looking at the project, I believe the replacement of dark horse by student housing does not serve the student community. While affordable housing is vital, engaging with the local community is also important to us. Dark Horse is a place where you find both undergraduate graduate students, but also non-students. It's a place for everyone. It is a unique place for the people in Boulder, and I would be really sad to see it go. I'm an international, sorry, I'm an international student and I know a lot of us don't go out as much as American students. I'm guessing because we might not have the same budget. Yet, we are far from our family and we need to make friends to connect with the community. Dark Horse is a place to do so. It is close to campus for those who don't have a car and it is affordable. How many other places do you know in Boulder where you can get a burger and a beer for $410? Please keep this place alive. Please keep it affordable. And I believe it is important for students and it's important for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Havel, either Havel, Biggie or Harrell, Harrell. And I, I'm sorry, I should ask each of you to actually introduce yourselves when you, before you speak.
Sure. My name is Harrell Biggie. Um, I'm also a grad student at CU and I live, um, around 30th and Colorado. And I kinda wanted to voice my concerns about dark horse and the affordability of housing. Portability is, as we know, is a huge problem in Boulder. And I'm a little concerned that most of the housing that's gone up has, uh, ultimately ended up as these luxury apartments, which as a grad student is never kind of in our budget range. Combined with the fact that dark horse is kind of the only walkable place to go to a bar in that entire kind of quadrant of town. And without replacing that, there's not really great transportation options to get to anywhere else. Like downtown Pearl Street is not really that well accessible from like the Williams, uh,ville area. So with that in mind, like dark horse is the only place that grad students who live in that area can go for a drink and hang out and socialize. And I just don't see how this new proposal kind of enables that, especially, um, felt like the big gathering space. The fact that it was said that dark horse is not usually full. In my experience, when I usually go with friends in the evenings, it's usually always packed, except for a few select areas there. So, um, I'd like to voice my concern to kind of save the dark horse. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is, um, uh, Michael Grayson. Remember, please introduce yourself and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name's, uh, Dr. Michael Grayson. I've li- uh, I work at CU and I make a surprisingly little amount of money. I've lived in this area for seven years. And I've used it, used this commercial area a lot. And to me, what this looks a lot like is the, kind of the gentrification of the area I live in. And it looks a lot like the types of things that I wouldn't be able to afford. And the plan proposed doesn't really look like, um, anything similar to, I guess, what it currently looks like. But yeah, I'm mostly worried about the, I wouldn't say this is like a cultural center. But you're still, when you're, if you get rid of these commercial businesses that have existed for 40 years, that's still a large amount of cultural, cultural erosion that's occurring in that area. And it's an area I care, care about, so I wanted to voice my concern.
Thank you, Dr. Grayson. Next is, uh, Carol Krawchuk.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Okay. My name is Carol Krawchuk. And, um, I wanna start with Dark Horse is a historic restaurant and bar built in 1975. And it serves as a non-traditional third space for every age group to sit down and have a good time with their friends and family. It's a melting pot of Boulder, Boulder car, culture with visitor ranging from team sports enthusiasts to hardcore outdoor explorers to quiet Boulder resident families. It is undoubtedly one of the most historical and artistic bars in all of Colorado. You know, I've traveled around the world a good amount and its interior is still astound me with its intricate beauty. Regarding the proposal, um, if there exists a solution where dark horses present, is preserved while the rest of the block is redeveloped, it could be a compromise. However, um, the presented material made it seem like the goal, that goal is an afterthought. And the, uh, promise to move dark horse as a sort of an appeasement. So I remain skeptical to that solution. I think the dark horse utilizes its internal space to the maximum. It's packed even on weekdays. Moving dark horse, modifying its contents, in my view, it's the same as getting rid of it in a sense. Another angle of this issue is the height of the proposed buildings. I find it hard to justify modifying the height to 55 feet. What is the point of the standard if we don't follow it? If we keep allowing this, Boulder residents will no lo- no longer enjoy beautiful foothills and flat irons. To summarize, I am pro deconstruction of dilapidated seventies buildings, but I am anti-destruction of historical and cultural heritage and thus dark horse. I do not believe that moving dark horse will work or maybe not even happen. Uh, and I do think that, uh, we should continue following the standard for the height cap. If such compromises can be achieved, this proposal can be justified. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect, perfect timing. Ben Herman or Hermann?
Hi, my name is, uh, Ben Herman. So first I'd like to address some of the, uh, restaurant space. So the plan calls for only 7,796 square foot space total. I did some calculations, just the building that has Corelli's and Cosmos is approximately 8,250 square foot. This does not include the dark horse restaurant space on the east side of the Sprouts with Mo's Barbecue Dairy Queen, or the dining areas in the Broker Inn and the Conoco Station. Additionally, none of it is slated until the final phase of the development. We might be reminded of the promised low income senior housing that was to be built off of 33rd and Arapahoe is a late phase of the, uh, luxury academy senior housing. The low income housing was completely canceled by the developers after the plans were approved and after they started construction of the luxuries, uh, center. Developers promised concessions, but rarely deliver on them. We stand to lose all of the restaurant space in a crucial junction in town if we let the plan proceed as is. Commercial space, primarily a grocery store is planned for phase two and three. However, converting, convert, eh, commercial space to restaurant space in a multi-story building is expensive to do post-construction. Dedicated restaurant space should be guaranteed in the first phase and more of it, and the plot with dark horse should remain unchanged. According to the plans, the entirety of the student housing building is contained within the dark horse lot and parking lot. This building should be removed or at least reduced to the, only in the existing dark horse parking lot. This would reduce the overall number of units and traffic considerations. However, if more units are absolutely required, some of the buildings next to Willville could have, be even higher than 55 feet, given that the Darley Towers are 150 feet. However, there are aspects of the, of the plan that are good, such as apartments above a grocery store. That is a great idea. But the dark horse serves as a meeting point for the entirety of the south side of town and is walkable within minutes to the highest density of students at Bear Creek, the student apartments along 28th and 30th, and the neighborhoods baseline Southern Martin Acres, which are also very high student populations. For a plan that prides itself on increasing walkability, they do not take into account severe decrease of walkability that the loss of a family-friendly restaurant, bar and community meeting point would bring to that side of town.
Great, thank you. Sage Sherman.
All right. Hello there and thank you, members of the plan committee.
Your name, please.
Oh, hello there. My name is Dr. Sage Sherman and I'm a postdoctoral associate at CU Boulder. I wanna thank you for having, uh, us be able to voice our concerns during this meeting. One of the things that I wanna mention is we bring up a lot of, um, concerns and compliments about the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. However, I want to bring up maybe some of the goals and objectives of the Boulder County Sustainability Plan and whether or not we meet the objectives of that plan and Boulder's assessment of trying to reach carbon neutrality. The ambitious development of new projects obviously can create, um, more, uh, problems and issues when it comes to trying to address some of those concerns. And one of those concerns that I could potentially point toward to is the deconstruction and dissolution of Sprouts Farmers Market, which can be a resource that helps chapter five of supporting local food and agriculture, where Sprouts Market actually gets many of its food and produce items from local Colorado farmers. And I have skeptic, I'm a little skeptical about the retail spaces and the commercial areas that are going to move into the area and whether or not they're going to actually be able to meet some of the objectives that are outlined by the Boulder County Sustainability Plan. And so, uh, I just wanna keep it a little bit briefer, but I think that greater consideration and more due diligence into future planning for whatever this zoning project would be, would, uh, keep the sustainability plan in greater detail.
Thank you very much. Matthew Jensen.
Thank you very much. Matthew Jensen, Boulder High School graduate and a Boulder Chamber Ambassador and a graduate of Leadership Fellows Program of the Community Foundation. Um, I believe that our task here is to keep Boulder weird. Keep it unique, keep it special and keep it with that special identity that I grew up with and that we all remember. Change is inevitable. I think it's important that we embrace change, we accept it and that as community leaders, um, that we adapt to those community needs. Initially, I was here to just talk about the dark horse and I wanted to save the dark horse. So many amazing memories there. But after seeing this plan, I have some serious concerns in other areas. So much of this community has already changed. It's been homogenized. The character has been removed from it. It, it just doesn't feel different. It doesn't feel the same as it did as the Boulder that I, that I knew that I grew up in. Some serious concerns about no parking there. If you've driven there now with the amount of, uh, housing that there currently exists, i- it, it's awful to drive there. I couldn't even imagine going to a basketball game or a football game and having to deal with that. And if you think that a, a, an adjunct professor is gonna live there, I think we're, we're out of our mind. I think the people that are gonna end up living there are rich kids, that their parents from California or Texas buy them properties there. I think you mentioned that the businesses are struggling there. It is hard to start and keep a business going in this community. Those businesses have been there for over 20 years and they are still and continue to thrive. I would ask that the city, uh, highly, uh, recommend that the applicant give some sort of historical designation to, to the dark horse. We have to keep Boulder weird. We have to keep it funky, have to keep with the character. The yuppification of Boulder needs to stop. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is, uh, Gregory Katz, Kate, sorry.
Uh, first, like I said, the applicant clearly cares.
Your name is?
Sorry.
Your name?
Name's Gregory Katz. First, like I say, the applicant clearly cares about Boulder, Andy. But you say that dark horse can't pay their rent, but you wanna put in commercial housing that's gonna be less affordable? Doesn't make any sense. Sorry. Boulder is an incredible place where people from all walks of life, diverse people can come together and experience a weird artistic town that loves just opening its community. And the reason it's so colorful and has so much personality is because of its local businesses. The dark horse has been here for decades. And it is one of the pillars in that colorful personnel. You, it cannot be taken down and it has to be preserved historically. I have many concerns about moving it to a more commercialized space. Uh, it's not the same building. It doesn't have the same character. And this is a seventies mall and I think we all want affordable housing, but I don't think this is affordable. I don't see it as affordable. I think who's going to live there with, uh, at least estimations for other buildings? The Williams family has around 1,800 a month. It's gonna be rich kids. It's gonna be no adjunct professors. It's gonna be luxury apartments, which is something the Boulder does not need. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hunter Domani. Thank you. Please just remember to introduce yourself.
My name is Hunter Damiani. I have been living in Boulder for about 20 years and I've been living in Martin Acres for about 12. So this is my community. And we all love the dark horse. I've been going there for 20 years along with the Williams family. And realistically, I mean, if it wasn't for them, it still wouldn't be open. So they love that place just as much as we all do. And I know they wanna see it continue in a new place where it can flourish. But, uh, realistically, as a community in Boulder, we have a huge problem. Like in Martin Acres, my neighborhood is, uh, a lot of people living together that can't afford housing. Right behind me, there is, uh, 12 people living in one house in a co-op because we need more housing in Boulder. This is been a problem here for a long time. And, um, this area is, it's just a parking lot. It, it needs to be updated. There's, I, I've walked through it a bunch of times. I ride my bike through there all the time. My girlfriend and I both shop at Sprouts, but. But it's a lot of unused space that could really be updated. When you're driving into Boulder, this is the first thing you're coming into. And even those pictures that were brought up showing the space and showing the retaining wall, there were police in the parking lot. I mean, that is a common thing there because it is not a properly used space. And I think this is a great opportunity for a really wonderful family to do an amazing thing with the space that has needed an update for a long time. And there's already massive buildings right there. If you look, there's Spanish Towers across from 27th. There's also multiple-story apartments. It's not really going outside of what already exists. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Adam Perry. Adam Perry? All right. Oh, okay. All right. Aiden Youngs. Aiden Young, I cannot pronounce your last name. And after Aiden, it'll be Kurt Dagaford. Close, okay.
Let's get my notes here. My name is Aiden Youngs-Gudis. I'm a Denver and Boulder native. I am here today to earnestly plead against the proposed plan for Williams Village Two. Not only are the proposed Williams Village plans completely exploitative of their student demographic it supposedly accommodates within, I mean, as we all know, very unaffordable $2,000-plus monthly price tag, which typically goes with housing in Boulder, well beyond any student's reasonable price range. But the plan also proposes tearing down longstanding pillars of the community that provide invaluable services to the Boulder community, including grocery stores, restaurants, and most specifically, the world-famous Dark Horse. Aside from being the only bar in Boulder worth a damn, the Dark Horse has been a cornerstone of the city for decades and is one of the few remaining icons reminding the city of its original draw of creativity and community. It serves all corners of the community, from being a college hotspot to a family restaurant, to sports bar to cultural landmark. I have known people to come back to Boulder after decades just to visit the Dark Horse. I have seen long-lost friends and family members reunited, and on more than one occasion, I've witnessed people make their first friend there after moving into town. These are the things that matter in a community that I believe as representatives of the city of Boulder, you must take into consideration. The fact is that Dark Horse does more for the community and student population of Boulder than exploitative student housing ever could. It's called world famous because of its immense reputation, and to tear it down would be a travesty to the community and the world at large. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kurt. And then after Kurt is David Daniel Henderson.
My name is Kurt Dagaford, and I'm here to voice my objection to the development proposal that would demolish or relocate the Dark Horse in favor of new development. I'm a local. I've been coming to the Dark Horse since I was a student in high school. I attended CU Boulder and made many memories within its walls. And although I have since moved out of the city, I still regularly visit Boulder to patronize the Dark Horse. My story is not unique. The Dark Horse is more than just a restaurant and bar, more than just an old building. It is a community. For me and many others, the Dark Horse holds a special place in our hearts. Is it a place for families and friends to gather, a place to celebrate life's highs and commiserate its lows? A place that is welcoming and accessible to all, regardless of wealth, skin color, religion, or creed? It is one of the few remaining affordable establishments left in Boulder. While much of the city has been redeveloped to cater to a wealthier and upscale clientele, the Dark Horse has remained a pillar of the community, a place for everyone. I understand the desire to modernize and revitalize the location and do not object to this in concept. But newer is not always better, and it is critically important to consider the impact of new development, especially as it impacts a well-loved and longstanding pillar of the community. Demolishing the Dark Horse would represent an incredible loss. It is irreplaceable. It is historic. Relocating the Dark Horse is also problematic. The building, as it stands today and how it has stood for decades, has a life of its own, a soul. Moving it would remove the very essence of what makes it special. I also worry about a bait and switch in which the original intent to relocate the Dark Horse is abandoned entirely in favor of something else. There's a well-known history of broken promises in Boulder development. I implore the board to reject this development proposal. Let the Dark Horse stay. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. All right, David Henderson, and next will be Chad Henderson.
Good evening, Daniel Henderson.
Sorry, Dan.
No problem. I'm a Boulder native. I graduated from CU twice. I left and came back like so many of us do. I consider myself a Philly well-off resident in Boulder, and Dark Horse is and has been and will be my favorite restaurant. You all know it's a special place. My wife and I took our wedding photos there. So I won't speak too much on that. I think that if we've heard a theme tonight, it's that affordability is sort of the word that goes around. And I'm sure I don't come to these meetings a lot, but that it's a citywide problem. I saw you nod when an earlier person said Dark Horse is the last person to get a burger and a beer for $10. That remains true. I heard a really great melting pot type reference here that this is a place where everybody from students to grad students to families to more well-off individuals can come and do. And I worry that with the proposed development that that will change. I think that the applicant represents themselves really well with ours being well-meaning. But I'd like to hear a plan for how can the affordability of this area be preserved? Because I think there is a lot to be said for cramming a lot of cheap money-earning space into this little spot. It's not a destination for a lot of people. As we said, there's cars and parking lots that you have to intend to come here. So I think in general, I'm in favor of trying to find a way to maybe focus the proposal on the broker area as not the Phase Three, but maybe the Phase One.
All right, thank you. Chad Henderson, and then Louis LaCroix.
Hello, my name is Chad Henderson. To start, I've been angry about the development of Boulder since about 2012. Born and raised here, the hospital I was born is gone, or rather moved, and the building has been empty and derelict since. The university hill has been practically gutted well before the hotels were designed to replace it. And there's really not a space left in this town, as we've been saying, is affordable and accessible. It's fantastic to try to develop more housing, to put more places in this town for people to afford to live, but it's not going to be how it works. I even keep hearing student housing for this proposal, student housing is itself unaffordable in this town. I spent several hours today trying to look for an apartment that I could afford that's less than $2,200, and I still can't really find that, let alone with the access that I need in space, the access to windows, the access to my job, which I've worked at for almost 10 years. I still barely make enough to put myself outside of affordable housing AMR or AMI for this town. So I'm in a dead zone insofar as I'm too wealthy to get housing help here, and I'm far too poor to afford the housing to be here. This plan, I don't think, will address any of that. I think adding 1,000 people to an already horribly done intersection won't work. We all know the issues with Colorado and 30th just north of it. Regardless of the fact that an intersection has been updated there, I've still almost been hit multiple times by cars and bikes alike from that development. This town has long since had great aspirations for the development that it can do and failed to achieve it often by not listening to the residents and their concerns. On top of that, of course, we all want the Dark Horse itself to say, as everyone has so aptly said here, and especially that should be taken into account, clearly the international recognition that it is getting, not just from people like my brother and I that are born and raised in the neighborhood and love to keep doing, going there and experiencing it for as long as we stay in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Lois LaCroix, and then it'll be Anna Malara Whitman.
Lois LaCroix, I've lived in Boulder since 1970. I helped decorate the Dark Horse. It is a great bar. This building is way, way too massive for the spot. It's a B C two and an M U B zoning, and they're asking for four and five height, four and five levels of a height. And they're talking about sterns and Darley. They were not even subject to the city height limit. That has nothing to do with how high that those buildings should be. They have said in their proposal that they're going to pay cash in lieu, which is a stupid position that the city has anyway, and that there are not going to be affordable housing units there. And how much ever the Williams family may be a lovely family, they're not doing this for the good of the city of Boulder. They're doing it to make money. They're going to make a lot of money. There are no affordable units that are going to be there. The biggest apartment that they're talking about is 791 square feet. There is no way a family could ever live in there. It's ridiculous. And then on top of that, the 30th and Baseline intersection, there's only two ways out of that whole property. Baseline intersection is one of the most dangerous intersections right now for bicycles and pedestrians. There are more accidents there than almost any other intersection in the city of Boulder. There's an intersection at 28th and Baseline, one at 30th and Baseline, and you're talking about putting another one on Baseline? The traffic concept is, it will not work. Hiding, what did you say? Something, you said something about making hidden parking? How are people gonna go to commercial businesses if the parking is hidden? It's a terrible, massive place that does not belong in B C two housing area.
Thank you very much. Anna Malara Whitman? And then it'll be Jerob Felknor. I think I'm mispronouncing that.
Hello, my name is Anna Malara Whitman, and I'm here to echo and speak on the importance of trying to keep the Dark Horse. Now I do apologize, seeing as I don't know the plan or layout very well. But myself and many of my friends, some of which are with me today, echo the same sentiment. I have seen the shift in Boulder's culture. I've lived in Boulder my whole life, and every year I see that more gentrification is occurring that has subsequently led to the destruction of Boulder hallmarks, such as the beloved Sturts in Copeland that we lost a couple of years ago. Removing those hallmarks takes away part of what it means to be a citizen, student, or tourist resident in Boulder. The Dark Horse is one of those staples. The unique environment, the impressive decor, and antiques that hang in the Dark Horse is what drew many of us in. It is one of the last remaining things in Boulder that makes me feel like kind of how it was when I was growing up. As a younger person, I can absolutely sympathize with the fact that we do need affordable housing in this city and in this town. Absolutely. However, we are demolishing a huge part of the community by getting rid of the Dark Horse and other surrounding businesses, which are equally not are equally important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerob Felknor, and then Adam Caro, I think, is next.
Jacob Felknor. Thank you, guys, for giving all of us the opportunity to speak today. I won't belabor the point much more. My, you know, people here have really hit a home about what the Dark Horse means to this community. So I'll kind of talk about my personal experience with it. I'm a third-generation CU Boulder grad. My grandparents moved here as graduate students in the late 50s, actually. Early 60s, they bought a house. Affordability of housing is obviously a problem in Boulder. And, you know, I also believe that this proposal will turn more into luxury apartments as opposed to affordable housing. Going back to the Dark Horse, my dad worked there when he was a student at CU. He went off and became an accountant and then returned to the Dark Horse as he rented his school to become a teacher in his community. This place has been a third place for, you know, members of this community. For me, I have my home, my work, and the Dark Horse in Boulder. I want to continue to echo the, you know, the sentiment from everyone that we need to keep Boulder weird. We need to keep Boulder's character. The Dark Horse is that place for me and so many other people. There are countless, countless occasions that I've gone to the Dark Horse for, you know, from sporting events to celebrating birthdays, to celebrating new jobs. You know, this place is home. The final thing I'll say is I urge you guys to consider who showed up tonight. You know, I think, I think part of your responsibility is to reflect the, you know, the best wishes of the community you serve. And, I mean, I think I've counted one, maybe, objection from the community tonight. I know we haven't gotten to everybody, but I urge you to please reflect the wishes of the community who showed up.
Thank you, thank you. Adam Larro, Adam? 8:05 20th? Okay.
My name is Adam Garb. I am here today just as a community member. I've only been in Boulder for five years. I'm an undergrad student at CU. I just kind of wanted to share my experience when I bring people to Boulder. People who are here to see me or see my friends, like my family, past friends from where else I've lived. They never peek the hill on 36th and see Boulder for the first time. It's like, wow, look at Willville. It's never the first thought in their mind. So adding more of Willville, I don't see as a benefit to the community because it detracts from the mountains and the view and the culture that we have here. I, when I bring this up to my friends in classes and at work, no one's excited. No one's like, thank God the Dark Horse is going away. It is not reflected well in the community. A lot of people haven't heard about this, but, I mean, there are a lot of people here. I don't know what your turnout is normally, but it seems pretty large. So I think that speaks volumes. And I just, I feel like a lot of the community and people that I talk to and deal with, which are students, which make up a majority of the community, don't feel positively about this. It's rather a heartbreaking conversation to have. We are at this point in city planning where we are thinking about tearing down the Dark Horse and adding more Willville, which no one is generally happy to see when they look at Boulder for the first time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Louisa, or Louis, Louisa Elnsor? And then, thank you. And then next will be Paul Whiteside.
Hello, my name's Louisa Elnsor, and I'm a first-year student at CU Boulder. I'm studying engineering in the Engineering Honors Program, and I live in Willville currently. Along with many other people here, I do not want the restaurant to be demolished. My mother and I went there from when I've, when I've just been born. It's a place where people gather. It's a place where people come together and learn more about each other. And I think tearing it down is something that's, you're just gonna lose the community there, and people are gonna eventually have to move because of that. But in the event that this doesn't go through, and we instead build some things, sorry, I'm really nervous.
Don't be. You're doing fine.
I come to the conclusion that there are some safety concerns. As a student who lives in student housing currently, I noticed on the plan that there are rooftops on student housing, and that is an issue. Right now, all rooftops in CU Boulder are closed due to the event that students unfortunately have been throwing themselves off rooftops. So then I question, where are you sending these students to, you know, do outdoor activities? Are you sending them back to the original Williams Village? Along with that, where are students who have meal plans going to go? Are they, again, those 800 students or however many we were talking, where are they going to go get their meals? Where are they gonna go? And one other concern I noticed was everybody was saying going through the parking lot is unsafe. And while I do agree with that, the main concern here is that there are unfortunately many homeless people and people that like to, you know, take advantage of students walking home, especially in the night. And I question with all the benches I see in the proposed plan, what are we gonna do for safety of students trying to get back to their dorms or their student housing? Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Whiteside? Who will be followed by Thomas Sigler? Please go ahead. Sorry.
This is a really kind of an interesting situation that the family and the developers are in with the Dark Horse. This business has been struggling really for quite a long time. The owner is 70 years old and is in a position that they are going to have a difficult time trying to transition this to a new, to a new to a new group of people that may be To a new group of people that may be related to them. There are certain financial realities here that are greatly affecting the situation. This is something that the, the family would love to be able to try to continue. But the, the ownership at this point, we've got an agreement with them and. It's been had long conversations with them. They are right now trying to figure out how they will sustain this company and this, this business and this restaurant going forward themselves. There's quite a bit of value in all of the interior improvements there, and that those improvements could very well help. Is, is the intention is that those may be sold in order to help the family going forward and. You know, and help their legacy. But at this point in time, there are large challenges. We don't want anybody to get the wrong impression here that this is something can easily be transited straight into another property. It will be developed on the, on the premises. So there are challenges here. We want everybody to know that. And that the Tobans couldn't be here tonight to discuss this themselves, but it is their intention to. Try to transition potentially out of this business at some point in their future. We want to keep it along for around now another two, three, four years potentially, if we can keep going and continue to subsidize the business.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to ask, what is your relationship to the wild Irish or?
I am assisting the, the development team. I am part of the development team. Yeah, thank you for us.
Okay, Thomas Sigler, Sigler, and then Destin Woods.
Hello, I'm Thomas Sigler. I live off of thirtieth and Colorado currently, and. I want to speak mostly on the fact that Dark Horse is a great place to get food. And is one of the few places nearby that I can get food. That's not just a low wage, quick access, like. Honestly, barely subpar. Mini chain sort of place to get food. There's also the barbecue place that is in that corner and also Giannos, which is the Italian place. Those are also very good places to get food. That is not. A ten dollar hastily made under a warmer sort of fast food. Items. These having a variety of places to eat and ways to eat are very important places. I really enjoy being able to sit down and eat at a place and not just be shuffled out so that some other person can come in and. Get a, as previously stated, a hastily slapped together sandwich. Also in that shopping center is Game Force, which is a very important place for digital archiving and keeping. Our digital history alive and safe and well. They do a lot of work on. Refurbishing and making available older forms of electronics for future generations to continue to enjoy. Much of our digital history is being lost actively because people are not taking time to. Preserve it and keep it safe, and we need to be preserving our digital and physical histories equally so that we can keep those. Items alive for future generations to build off of and to enjoy also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Destin Woods, and after Destin, we'll be going to folks who are online. And at that point. Amanda will be, someone will be taking over from calling names. Go ahead, please, Destin.
Hi, my name is Destin Woods. I work as a robotics technician for CU. And I would also like to echo my sentiment for the dark horse, but also the unique architecture. Based on a quick Google search will not fit with anything in the architectural portfolio of Morgan Creek Ventures or Coburn. I actually have some friends that live at Timber Apartments, which is by. Some office building that they designed that was originally supposed to be a new Twitter headquarters, now X and Elon Musk, all that jazz. And I know for a fact that those apartments are not nearly affordable. And studio, mind you, that is maybe six hundred and fifty square feet is eighteen hundred a month. At my current salary, the max I could afford is like thirteen fifty-two. So the fact that they think that this is going to be affordable housing with the architecture that they have planned is a ridiculous idea. And not to mention, who is going to manage said architecture or said building as well in terms of leasing and such? I also used to work for, let's say, the Boogeyman Four Star Realty. If we want to say exploiting students for housing costs and everything, like who's going to manage that? Are we gonna give it over to them? Are we gonna give it over to Boulder Property Management as well, who has many houses that are barely up to code? So I would like to know what the plan is for affordable housing within such luxurious architecture. Not to mention trying to even move the dark horse into something like that, which will also now bump up their prices as well. I just don't see any kind of affordability in this plan. As well as the, the sentiment of moving the students over here versus having a bunch of resident housing in the middle. And then students over here. Why would you not put the students next to the students where there's already a buff bus line where they would like to go and use and take to campus? I, I fail to see how that is a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Thomas and Amanda, please take over from here.
Yeah, thank you. We're actually gonna have Vivian help us, excuse me, on Zoom. Vivian?
Yeah, so far we have eleven members from the public online who have their hands raised. Just want to ask others who plan to speak to go ahead and raise their hand as well, so we have a good idea of the numbers. And I'll introduce people in order that I see and let you know who's next, so you can get ready. And remember, you have two minutes. I will call on you, but please also introduce yourself. So we'll start with Kimon Harmon, followed by M Fox. Please go ahead, Kimon.
Hello. Hi, I'm Kimon Harmon, and you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So I just want to say that you, in all of their presentation, totally ignored. The entire Martin Acres Development, which the Williams family developed. We are reliant on that center. Because we have no grocery store left in Basmar. We will become a food desert when Sprouts goes away. We walk from Martin Acres over there. There are a whole bunch of people, more than students, that use that. And you're totally neglecting a huge population of, of people. It, it's obvious. It's just completely student centered, and it's, it's not a reality. Martin Acres is full of families and people. People who work as well as students that need that center. So anyway, I just wanted to talk to that. I also want to talk about on page two twenty-four on some of your staff comments that's saying, based on the metrics provided. I'm saying that the concept review application. Which you note contains several inconsistencies, and the current proposal is primarily a residential project. Such a percentage breakdown is arguably inconsistent with the intent of both the CB and the M U B land use designations. And clearly inconsistent with the desired characterizations of neighborhood centers as outlined in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And then on page one seventy-seven regarding use. Such a percentage breakdown is arguably inconsistent with the intent of both the CB and the M U B land use designation. And is clearly inconsistent with the desired characteristics of neighborhood centers as outlined in Boulder Valley Comprehension Plan. And I'm also dismayed by the zero onsite affordable housing. I understand the rationale of cash in lieu, leveraging collected money with additional grants, et cetera, but the foundational concept. Of inclusionary housing is exactly that, affordable housing included in developments alongside market rate units.
Thank you. Please wrap it up with a final thought.
My final thought is by always shipping off affordable units elsewhere, Boulder actually practices exclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have M Fox, followed by George Craft. Please go ahead, M, and introduce yourself with your first and last name.
Hi, my name is M Fox, and I spent a couple of years living at the Kensington apartment building right across baseline. Despite it being said earlier that you can only access the dark horse and the other businesses there by car, that was one of my favorite walks in all of Boulder. The dark horse is an iconic part of Boulder, and as stated, it's eligible to be a historic landmark this year, and it holds significant meaning for Boulder residents, past and present. On the other hand, the proposed plans lack personality and will further destroy what little history and character Boulder has left. Moving forward with these plans will leave the neighborhood a bland cookie cutter, luxury housing nothingness that will not fulfill the needs or capture the hearts of Boulder's residents the way that the. Places like the dark horse can. I was paying about fourteen hundred for a one bedroom apartment at Kensington. And there's no way that those units aren't going to be even more expensive than that. As stated earlier, there are thousands of people who walk through the, the dark horse development area daily, and to them, it is a place of community building. The deep meaning that that place holds to the community will not be the same if you tear down the historic building that has become so iconic. And its relocation cannot even be guaranteed. This would be a major loss to Boulder's identity as a city. This is not even to mention ruining even more views in the area by allowing a building height increase. This proposal suggests changing so many rules to make it happen, and it's not for the benefit of the people of Boulder. Thank you very much.
Thank you, M. Next, we have George Craft, followed by David Pardo. Please go ahead, George.
Hi, my name is George Craft. I live in Baseline Sub. I've lived here for over forty years. I don't represent any organization, just my family and me. I think the Williams Village development is a terrible idea for several reasons, including the impact on neighborhood. There's crime, parking, traffic, flood control, and the merchants. Baseline Sub is a area of single family homes occupied by families and students. When Willville East was built, it was a significant impact on the neighborhood. Traffic surged, crime increased. Parking became a nightmare because parking at the new buildings was inadequate and too expensive for the students. The whole tenor of the neighborhood changed. The placement of another development of high density dwellings across from this neighborhood will exacerbate the problem. Despite having parking onsite, it is likely to encourage the same problems that currently exist. Traffic will also be a problem. Baseline Road is already very busy. Thirtieth Street to the south of Baseline is busy with bus resident and commercial traffic. There's simply no way to safely and conveniently move hundreds of residents. Eight hundred and fifty-five students. How many cars is that? There's always no way to get that traffic in and out of that corner. I'm not a hydrological engineer, but I don't think I have to be one to realize the floodplain diagram is wishful thinking. Anyone who was here in twenty thirteen realizes that Bear Creek and Skunk Creek are disasters waiting to happen. Placing a series of hard buildings in the floodplain is just a bad idea, and I notice it's a high hazard area as well. The people in our neighborhood, others nearby, and their students appreciate a summer's night treat at Dairy Queen. A fine dinner at Corelli's, a great sandwich at Mo's, pizza at Cosmos, or getting their food from Sprouts. And of course, the dark horse. There's no substitute.
George, you just, you've come to the end of the two minutes. You could just wrap up.
I just, to finish, so I'm saying, I really think it's a mistake to allow this development. It'll present danger and traffic flood control. It will change a quiet and peaceful neighborhood into a nightmare like thirtieth and Pearl and other commercial areas.
Thank you, George. Sorry to cut you off, but I just want to make sure everybody else. Thank you for being here. Next, we have David Pardo, followed by Scott Woodard. Please go ahead, David, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's David Pardo, and I first moved to Boulder in twenty twelve. I actually worked two jobs. To make rent at the time, which was a laughably small six hundred and fifty dollars a month for my room with five roommates in a house. But I worked at the Whole Foods at twenty-ninth and Pearl during the day, stocking the produce department. And then at night, I would go bartend at Rubens, which has since closed, but many folks remember it for its great Belgian beer selection. I eventually had to leave Boulder because I couldn't afford to live there anymore. There wasn't enough housing, and I was getting old enough that I didn't want to live in a house with four roommates. That was something that I didn't want to do anymore. So I moved down to Denver, and that's actually where I'm calling you in from. I make it up to Boulder all the time. I love visiting the dark horse. But the reality is that I was forced out of Boulder, as were most of my friends who I made when I first arrived in Boulder. Because there was not enough housing in Boulder. Housing prices went up massively every single year. My friends who bought a house for half a million dollars in twenty fourteen, their house is now worth one point two five million. They could never afford to buy their house. The most important thing that Boulder needs is more housing. And so any way that can happen is incredibly valuable. I've always dreamed of being able to move back to Boulder. And the idea of there being new housing units sounds awesome to me. Whether the dark horse will be the same if it moves, should maybe the plan be changed to allow the existing dark horses to stay? That's up for debate. But to me, the housing element while retaining all that business that's already there would be incredible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Thank you for sticking to the time. And next, we have Scott Woodard, followed by Mike Marsh. Please go ahead, Scott. If done mute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hey, I'm Scott Woodard. I'm the managing partner of Fit Properties that owns the Sprouts Building. I've been a Boulder resident since nineteen seventy-five. I actually worked in the gas station on the corner of the summer in nineteen seventy-six, when the Albertsons was where Sprouts is now. In nineteen eighty-five, we purchased that building. It was wheels, roller rink. We turned it into Pulse Fitness Center. Boulder's Coast nightclub, the first Boulder Rock Club, twenty-four hour fitness was in there for ten years. Sprouts has been there for fifteen years. I'm a developer in town. I've been discussing redeveloping this project with the Williams family for almost thirty-five years. And it's a very complicated project with a lot of moving pieces. And I think this team has the skills and experience to be able to handle those issues. Right now, we have a lot of safety issues on the property. We have numerous pedestrian and auto conflicts. The north side of Sprouts is constantly an icing problem in the winter because the roof drains across the driveway. And we have drainage problems throughout the entire site. It's an old inefficient design with rundown buildings and obviously mostly impermeable surfaces for parking. This plan, I think, is one of the best uses for this site, and the location for multifamily couldn't be better anywhere else. I think I'm excited about this team and their proposal for Williams Village, too. I hope you can help them along with their project and guide them to a successful conclusion. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Next, we have Mike Marsh, followed by Olive Mosley. Please go ahead, Mike.
Good evening. I wish more board members lived in this area so they would know the lived day to day as we do. Currently, westbound baseline traffic at rush hour, stopped at the twenty-eighth street light, already backs up past twenty-ninth and thirtieth streets at rush hours. The twenty-eighth street intersection handles tons of in and out commuter traffic because that's where they get on and off the highway, plus local neighborhood traffic. If you add a traffic light at twenty-ninth street, feeding even more cars into this mess, you'll have multidirectional backups on top of backups. I can send photos of the baseline backups to you. I'm hearing lots of nice but non-binding and probably empty promises from the developers. I urge the board to require the zoning prescribed retail, moving the dark course, et cetera, in phase one. And then allow the unusual exception uses of housing and hotel in later phases. Neighborhoods serving benefits are all in phase three. Developers make the least money on retail, and they'll drop it like a hot potato. We've seen over and over, this stuff gets dropped in the final phases, and you'll have no recourse then. This is land zoned as retail. Last, we can't sleep with our windows open in summer because of the adjacent deafening Highway thirty-six noise at seventy-five miles per hour, and we don't have air conditioning. The World Health Organization ranks traffic noise second among environmental threats to public health after air pollution. Currently, half the highway noise disperses north towards Fraser Meadows, but now you're considering fifty-five foot high. But now you're considering fifty-five foot high hard surface buildings on the north side of US thirty-six towering above the highway that will reflect the sound directly back to Martin Acres to the south. Its basic acoustics will get a double dose of already deafening highway noise. Is the city's goal to destroy Martin Acres? If not, please limit these buildings to the height of the elevated highway and no higher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up we have Paula Mosley followed by Ron DePue.
Hi, I'm Paula Mosley. I live in Martin Acres as well. Um, sorry, get my notes. I thought there were going to be more speakers. The community, this was mentioned over and over this evening. However, it appears that this refers to a whole new community, one that prioritizes is the new residents and disregards the existing neighborhoods that are supported by our existing retail center. Preserve existing? If the entire site is to be demolished, that does not sound like preserving. It sounds like replacing and substituting with an inward focus rather than the way that the current retail and services support existing neighborhoods. Calling the current center a strip mall is a bit insulting. It was, that was in some of the documentation. It's not what you see on Wadsworth, you know, where you've got pawn shops and tattoo parlors and stuff. Our Williams Village doesn't meet the stereotype of a strip mall. Is it in need of beautification? Yes. In need of a facelift? Yes. Updating? Yes. Green areas? Yes. Shade trees? Yes. Any decent designer or architect can create something good from a cleared demolished site. But a great design team can build something good that works with and honors what already exists. I also question the notion that pushing retail right up to the street makes it more inviting. Looking at baseline crossing, for example, the only folks I see out front of those businesses are people waiting for the bus. People don't want to eat lunch outdoors a few feet from baseline or any other busy road. I do not support changing the zoning or allowing modifications to the height limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next up we have Ron DePue followed by Daniel Howard. Please go ahead, Ron. You've done mute yourself, Ron.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Ron DePue. I've lived in Martin Acres for over forty years. Twenty-nine fifty-two baseline is zone B C two defined by code section nine dot five dot two as neighborhood serving retail serving a number of neighborhoods. Staff note, the current site complies with that code requirement. What is proposed, won't. Just eight percent will be retail for eighty percent will be extremely high density, unaffordable housing and sixty-six percent a hotel. Page one seventy-three of your packet says that hotels are not an allowed use in B T B C two zoning, allotting just eight percent of the property for neighborhood serving retail and zoning that city law says should be all or nearly all re- retail is not compliant with the zoning per chapter nine. Second, the meager, the retail is slated for the very last phase of the development. Final phases of a project is where items tend to get dropped. We regularly see developers claim the project went over budget and final phase retail just won't pencil. Uh, note the developer's words, the current retail and restaurant uses will be retained when possible. When possible is a loose phrase, telegraphing that it won't happen. Developer of the former Daily Camera Building in Eleventh and Pearl, Pearl, for instance, promised a community theater in order to get the project approved, but never actually built the theater. Uh, three eleven Mapleton developer promised offsite affordable housing at the former Ruhs Flowers site. That never happened either. Eight percent retail is way too little and the developer will probably drop even that small bit in the final phase. I expect that Sprouts will be dropped rather than relocated. What's clear from the examples I cite is that the city doesn't have any way of enforcing promises that developers make in order to get their permits. Please deny this proposal or require at least fifty percent retail, restaurants and services in phase one, two and three, since those are the purposes of this property per code section nine. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, just letting everyone know, we have five more people waiting to speak. If you haven't raised your hand yet, uh, please do so so that we know to call on you. So next up we have Daniel Howard followed by Lisa Harris. Please go ahead, Daniel.
Uh, yes, my name is Daniel Howard. I live in South Boulder. I would like to voice my support for the development. As a regular bike commuter along thirty-six, the current excess of impervious surface asphalt for car parking is inherently unfriendly and hostile towards bikers and fellow pedestrians. The current design addresses this increase at much friendlier destination. Reminds me of my own living quarters in college is in a mixed use setting where I had too much ice cream from the shops below my apartment in my mixed use residential address. This mixed use proposal provides improved walkability and clearly aligns with the current Boulder Valley comprehensive plan. Nonetheless, my primary feedback for developers involves parking intensity. I wholly support the intention of a request of a parking reduction requirement, particularly to reduce car dependency. To fully realize this alongside a daily affordable housing, I would encourage the cost of the very expensive underground parking, which can be twenty thousand to fifty thousand dollars per spot, be decoupled from any rental housing costs. If a resident chooses to be car independent, they should not have to pay for car parking bottles written to rent. Our parking should be charged separate from rent and when formulating the specific parking supply to provide, this economic nuance should be considered when finalizing the built parking design and associated requests for parking reduction. All in all, I remain excited for Dark Horse two point oh, two point oh with an amphitheater. The Dark Horse was the first establishment I visited this evening I first arrived in Boulder. However, the experience was soured by the current excessive parking provided that promotes drunk driving. I would be excited to be a potential future resident in one of these multifamily units. This way, as a person who chooses to live car free, I'll gain the freedom to walk less than a thousand feet to go to the grocery store in an iconic third place institution of Dark Horse, among many other community centric meeting places within the proposed development. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Daniel. Next we have Lisa Harris followed by Cecilia Gears. Please go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, my name is Lisa Harris. I'm a Boulder Community Hospital baby and I am a lifetime resident. I live in Martin Acres with many of my neighbors, along with the thousands of students that live in Willville and the Bear Creek Apartments. We shop at those stores. I realize that high-end maximum density housing creates maximum developer profits, but twenty-nine fifty-two baseline zoning code and comp plan neighborhood center designations are quite clear. This site is for neighborhood serving retail, which allows residents to walk and bike more and drive less. We want to support the city's climate action goals. Help us, help you. But this project takes us in the opposite direction, driving ever farther distances for everyday needs. South Boulder has very limited shopping and this project removes even more of it. Why do reasonable resident needs for basic necessary walkable retail always take a backseat to developer profits? Online purchasing doesn't fulfill all needs nor should it. It doesn't support local businesses nor should it. We, we need to support our local businesses. We need to make room for local retail. And it creates, this creates longer consumer pipe, tailpipes. The comp plan directs neighborhood centers to have, quote, "Buildings at scale and intensity lower than downtown." Downtown's height limit is thirty-eight feet. Twenty-nine fifty-two baseline proposes a solid wall of six fifty-five foot high buildings directly on the opposite side of Martin Acres. To put this in context, all of Martin Acres is roughly thirteen hundred housing units. So in this proposal with six hundred and ten housing units is roughly half of Martin Acres neighborhood population wise, going onto a road that already operates at a crawl at many points of the day. Staff, you comment in your packet on page one seventy-seven, quote, "Further, the con, the current proposal does little to achieve a transition in scale to surrounding uses and neighborhoods with the majority of the building frontages going five stories." Oh, yep, that's a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up we have Cecilia Gears followed by Lynn Segal. Please go ahead, Cecilia. You have two minutes.
My, my name is Cecilia Gears. I'm a um, resident at the southeast end of uh, Martin Acres, uh, two blocks from Table Mesa. I shop once a week in the uh, shopping, in the uh, fifty, twenty-nine fifty-two baseline locations. Sprouts is the place where I get most of my groceries. I like eating at Mo's. I am very happy that there is a uh, zone where I can do retail shopping in my neighborhood. My concerns about this proposal are the increase of traffic that it will bring, uh, the potential loss of retail. Um, I'm very concerned about the big emphasis on student housing and the um, the fact that we really need affordable housing in this city and that's not at all being addressed or if it's being addressed, it was merely a passing mention of um, diverse groups in the residential units. I really recommend that there be no zoning change. I recommend that there be no modification to height. And um, I really recommend that this proposal not go forward without massive um, reorientation from students to afford affordable housing within the city of Boulder. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you, Cecilia. Lynn Segal, you are next followed by Hunter Miller. Please go ahead, Lynn. You have two minutes.
That's when I think I'm so smart, boy. Um, you know, I wonder how this even came before this board this way. Um, it's, it's so, so long that these same problems keep on happening. And how is it that, I know the developer needs to make their money and everything, but the community benefit side of this and, and neighborhood centers and the value of the retail and commercial, you know, where's the hardware's, hardware store, where's the pharmacy? I mean, we lost the pharmacy right at where I, where I live by Alpine Balsam. Um, the neighborhood centers need to be emphasized and this is the perfect opportunity because this is surrounded by high intensity student housing. And look at what we have at Millennium, nine hundred and fifty student bedrooms at the Millennium. The Millennium should have been landmarked like the dark horse. And I mean, the dark horse should certainly stay too. Um, it's just so remarkable to be in a university town and get educated like at this planning board meeting. It just reminds me of, of everything, all the history of this and what needs to happen. And that, that we shouldn't have these long meetings. It should be very clear what you can do. There should be zoning for the hardware store. And that's what you have to have there. And that's what Bill Hollick has to put in there if he wants to develop it. Save all the time. Thanks for your listening.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up we have Hunter Miller followed by Rosemary Higerty. Please go ahead, Hunter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Hunter Miller. I live at foothills in Table Mesa. Uh, I work at Ball Aerospace as a spacecraft systems engineer. I went to school here at CU starting in twenty twelve. My dad went to CU here as well. He graduated in nineteen eighty-six and used to go to the dark horse all the time. We still meet there on a regular basis. I mean, the dark horse spans multiple generations. It's pretty wild. I am all for the points that other people are making with regards to housing, updating old properties, et cetera. But look around. I mean, we lost the walrus, Boulder Cafe, Sturts in Copeland, Cosmos, potentially another one, Bova's on the hill. I mean, what's next? I don't know, like the sink? Duchamp BT House? If those places were on hard, hard times, we'd come up with other solutions. Change is inevitable. I get that. But we have to draw the line somewhere. And that line is the world famous dark horse. Thanks.
Thank you, Hunter. Next to a Rosemary Higerty followed by Nick Aguilar. Go ahead, uh, Rosemary. Thanks.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. Um, I just agreed with so much of what people were speaking about opposing this plan. I have real big concerns about traffic on baseline. I don't know if any of you have the displeasure of being on baseline already in rush hour traffic. It's a nightmare. It's super scary. And I can't imagine even considering or adding another light on Twenty-Ninth Street, which is just going to increase more pollution from having more cars idling. Um, I'm really, really concerned about the high-end luxury student housing. Sometimes I wonder if, if Boulder of City is, has any benefit left for the citizens of Boulder or if it should just be called Planning Board for CU of Boulder? Because that seems like that's all we're turned into is a planning board for new CU high-end luxury student housing. Um, I also wondering, is anybody keeping track of how much housing there now is? There's been so many more projects going on and what, what the phase of housing is. I really agree that I wish Boulder would just let go of the payment in lieu program. I think that has been such a huge mistake for this town and that it has really dealt with no affordable housing or very little affordable housing being built because of that. Um, I don't really care about the dark horse. So that's one, one thing that, you know, I did find it very ironic when people just kept saying the owner is seventy years old and it's just like, like, oh my God, that's so old. Like, like, really? Um, I just really, really beg that you guys consider this. I, we want a neighborhood center. We don't want another CU student housing center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosemary. Um, we have two more people waiting to speak. Nick Aguilar followed by Brent Fontana. Please go ahead, Nick.
Hi, Boulder Planning Board. Um, my name's Nick Aguilar. Uh, thank you. I'm writing, or I wanted to speak in support of the redevelopment. Um, Boulder urgently needs more housing and mixed use developments. Um, I've been here for almost three years, um, following to the lower spectrum of income in Boulder. Um, and I know that we absolutely need to increase our housing supply at large at the same time as we're providing more affordable housing in the city and this development is part of that. Um, we can't oppose the development of more housing to allow more people to live here in Boulder. Um, I know that this isn't the purpose of the meeting, but I would really love to see like the abolition of parking minimums uh, and the continued strengthening of our bus and transportation network so that it's safe and easy for people to get around without a car. Uh, people don't need to come with cars and people don't need to come with parking. Um, please do everything you can to further reduce the parking at the site or decouple the cost of parking from housing construction costs or rental cost rather. I'm so tired of seeing excessive empty parking lots in Boulder and throughout the country. That does nothing to create a character and livability in a neighborhood place. We really need to build our community for people, not for private cars. Um, I'm really happy to see the plans to reduce the number of car entry and exit points around the site to make it safer for people walking and biking. I rely heavily on my bicycle to get around Boulder after an acquired disability. Um, I'm really sad that Sprouts will be closed due to redevelopment as I live in Table Mesa and regularly shop there. But I'm also happy to hear you all talking about the importance of, um, you know, including a new grocery store, including new developments. I think everything, everybody's comment speaks to the need for more housing in Boulder, uh, more affordable housing and also more affordable business developments. And for that, we need more space at large uh, for people and for businesses and for um, human centric places. Um, once again, really glad uh, that this is a plan in discussion here in Boulder. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next we have Brent Fontana followed by Dorothy Cohen and those are the two uh, last speakers we have on the, on the list. Um, if others would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand. Please go ahead, Brent.
Hello, my name is Brent Fontana. I'm a thirty-year resident of Boulder and a father of four Boulder natives. Um, we all live in South Boulder. And I think one of the strengths of our community is not so much what you sometimes see reflected in planning board discussions, which is strong opposition or strong support for any one plan, but deep rational debates about the viability and use of our neighborhoods. And in South Boulder, what we've repeatedly experienced is developers coming in, identifying B C two permitted and zoned land and trying to get abatements to develop it in other ways. We would simply like to see those parcels developed as intended for the use of the residents. I don't think anyone's opposed to development. People understand the need for more housing. People understand the need for future development. But there simply doesn't seem to be any attempt by developers to actually develop the sites as zoned. And most of the rational debate within the community around it is centered on that. I think I've heard lots of great points tonight about walkability, about access to multiple different types of transport and travel, about access to use, but I simply don't understand why. about access to use, but I simply don't understand why repeatedly over and over in South Boulder, we saw it at twenty-seven hundred baseline, now we're seeing it on the other side of the freeway, and every single BC two zoned piece of property seems to be ripe for dense development. And no, if little mind is paid towards the actual intent to use and zone of the community surrounding it. So please pay attention to that original zoning. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Brent. Next up, we have uh Dorothy Cohen, and she's the final um speaker with her hand raised. Please go ahead, Dorothy.
My name is Dorothy Cohen, and I live in Martin Acres. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan identified at twenty-nine fifty-two baseline as a neighborhood center described it the follow. In addition to serving as neighborhood gathering places, these centers also provide goods and services for the day-to-day needs of nearby residents, workers, and students. Neighborhood centers should include a mix of locally serving retail, the anchors such as grocery stores, personal services, hair salons, et cetera. Twenty-nine fifty-two is identified as a neighborhood center providing serving residents. I currently shop at Sprouts, and my friend who was here and got tired of waiting left. She also cert- um shops at Sprouts. The students use it. I know Corelli's is a neighborhood gathering place. And I don't know how long Corelli's has been there, the Dark Horse, which is almost a historic marker. I moved here in seventy-four, and that's the year um that uh the Dark Horse started. The city is trying to have more folks drive less for carbon footprint and climate change. By removing Sprouts, they illuminate grocery stores within walking distance of the residents. I think the fifteen-minute rule of a walkable neighborhood needs to be looked at more carefully. The city needs to look at zoning and keep businesses that serve neighborhoods by not getting rid of the barbecue, pizza, Corelli's, and the Dark Horse and force people to drive more. I do not think we need two boutique student housing within a mile of each other. The city needs to enforce uh the comp plan, and also I re- reiterate what people have said about traffic. Um, I often stop at Sprouts on my way home. And traffic is pretty bad there, and it's going to be worse if they have another stoplight there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Um, we have, um, I believe it's Macon Coles. Please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Macon Coles, and I live at Seventeenth and Mapleton. What we've got here is a struggling neighborhood center. We all cherish our neighborhood centers. There are eight of them in Boulder. And the reason we do is because they're good examples of being the center, the commercial center of fifteen-minute neighborhoods that serve the needs of residents that are nearby. And people can walk and bike to those commercial centers, serve the, um, eat at the restaurants, and patronize the grocery stores. What we've got here is a struggling neighborhood center, badly in need of renovation. I, it's, it's a little bit stunning for me to see so many people speaking forcefully about preserving the parking lot, um, which is what this, most of this site, this ten-acre site is about. But what this development promises to do is actually strengthen the neighborhood center by adding somewhat about ten percent to the commercial space that is there. And then adding to this already a fifteen-minute neighborhood, adding six hundred and ten units. The walk score is very high for this area, and the bike score is too. And yet traversing this site, walking through it, is just such a problematic thing. Folks, if you look at retail around our town, everywhere it is struggling. And we, we need to do things that will strengthen neighborhood centers like this. And I think the, the plan that is proposed here to provide more housing for people like Dave, who works at Whole Foods and was driven from our town by the inability to find any housing. We need to seize this opportunity, add that housing, and strengthen this center. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very mu- are we done?
Yep, no other questions.
All right. Awesome. Thank you all very much, and uh we appreciate all the input. Uh, if you guys are okay, I'm not gonna take a break. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, so, because we have Chandler who's sick and George and ML who are sick. So trying to get this so they can get to bed at a reasonable hour. Um, all right, so staff has suggested that we have four uh key questions. I'm wondering um if at least briefly we can put those questions up on the screen, and then we'll take them down again as we go through each one. Um,
Your thing. Let me pull it up for you.
Just put up, I think, just put up, I think you did one at a time, right, Chandler? So just put up the first one, and we'll go through that.
Yep.
Thank you. While he's doing that, I think what we'll do is we'll go through each question. I'll just go down the line. Um, and then if people have comments, they want to respond to something anyone on the panel said, we can respond. Uh, but just as a reminder, as a concept review, this is our opportunity to give feedback, to raise concerns, to talk about what we think is awesome or less than awesome. Um, and uh when it comes back down the road for site review, there'll be the opportunity to uh to explore some of the questions, some of the issues uh more deeply. Okay, key issue number one. Is the proposed concept plan generally compatible with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan? All right, um Chandler, if you take that down. Oh, considerations, uh, uh, neighborhood centers, economic, social, cultural opportunities, pedestrian-friendly and welcoming environments, and mixed-use places that strive to accomplish the guiding principles of neighborhood centers. Um, all right, Chandler, if you take that down, and then we can, I don't mean to be just rushing, but we, it, we have been here for a while. Um, okay.
Figure out how to take it down. All right.
Thank you. Okay, um, I'll, uh, folks online, I will come to you last. I'm just gonna go down the line here already. Mark.
Okay, so I'm gonna make some more general comments, but I guess they align with the key question number one. An answer to, does uh the project align with BBCP goals for neighborhood centers? I think that the answer is certainly yes. However, um, I find uh the George, was that?
Not my turn to comment.
The uh, what, what I struggle with is what I struggle with at many concept reviews, and that is the, in this case, uh, the applicant has come to us and expressed a great desire to uh receive our input and to potentially modify uh the concept based on our input. But they've come with a plan that's thin enough, so thin, that um it plays into a lot of community fears. And it um, uh, it's hard sometimes to actually comment on it because of the thinness and lack of design to respond to. So, um, in terms of neighborhood centers, on the application on page two oh nine, the applicant says they propose and want to build a vibrant, fully functioning neighborhood. And I, I, I love that. I am in support of rehabilitating acres of asphalt and soulless parking into um a vibrant neighborhood center. But um, I think that the tension there with the, with this application is such that uh it, it doesn't feel like what's put before us is, will realize that particular uh aspiration. And this is a, an application that, as I read through staff's comments, it is the, I am most aligned with staff's comments of any application or concept review that's come before us. So in terms of neighborhood centers and what uh this could be, I think, uh, take a close look at, I'm sure you have, but I continue to uh support staff's comments about the size massing and uh overall design and access. So neighborhood center, yes, but uh this is a, this is a tough one. And the, again, the concept review seems thin and playing to some, some fears that the community has.
Great, Lisa. At least, Laura.
I take that as a compliment.
It is late.
It is late. I'll try to be brief. I think generally, yes, this is compatible with the goals and objectives of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. I do have the same concern that has been mentioned about the purpose of a neighborhood center being to support the community with retail and neighborhood-serving uses and services. So I appreciate the applicant asking us, do we prefer to have more retail on the ground floor? For me, the answer is clearly yes. I understand that that poses some challenges with the economics because retail does tend to struggle. And this is something we're trying to balance, that people want fifteen-minute neighborhoods. They want walkability. They want the restaurants and the shops and the gas stations and the things that they need uh close to home. And we don't have the density often to support those things. And so I very much appreciate that this concept tries to do both. It tries to be a win-win and give us some housing as well as neighborhood-serving uh uses on the ground floor. And then those people who live above can help be customers for those businesses. So generally, I think this is a great concept, and yes, to more retail on the ground floor.
Kurt. You guys are so quick. It's amazing. So there are multiple layers of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, right? There's the goals and objectives, the policies. Uh, there's the, the land use designations, and then there's the neighborhood centers. And unfortunately, not all of these are always um pulling in the same direction. They're sometimes in conflict, and I feel like they are in this particular case. I think that there are a lot of the policies of, of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan that this is completely aligned with in terms of providing greater additional housing, um, reducing impervious space, um, impervious surface, um, uh, improving economic vitality. The, the applicant team listed a bunch of these in the application, and I think I agree with, with many, if not all of those. Uh, in terms of the land use, so it's split between CB and MUB. CB is listed as being primarily business, which in the, if you look at the part of this plan that is, that has the CB land use, that little western corner, that is not business. Uh, it's not, it's, it's completely residential. So there's there's that. Uh, on the other hand, MUB talks about a significant amount of housing. And so I think, and that's what is being proposed, and I think that that is consistent. Uh, in terms of the neighborhood centers, I agree with what, um, what Lauren and Mark talked about, that uh they, they do need to be neighborhood-serving. They need to provide a significant amount of, or I guess, yeah, I, I will say a significant amount of, of commercial, neighborhood-serving commercial. So I think it's very important that we not lose any commercial, any commercial space uh that we provide at least as much as we currently have, and preferably more, as Laura pointed out. The economics are difficult these days. People keep, you know, ordering off of Amazon, and we all do. And that hurts our, our neighborhood stores, and so that's the reality that we're in. As Laura said, we want to have the, the local commercial, but we don't always have the land use structure uh and the behaviors in order to support it. So, um, so overall, I would feel, I feel that it does support, um, i- i- it is in alignment with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan uh providing as much commercial as is feasible and um and perhaps without the hotel, uh, which is not really a neighborhood-serving use.
Okay, I'm gonna go to ML and then George and then me.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, so key issue number one, the, the BVCP is our guiding document. And as such, as such, this identifies the neighborhood center with plenty of direction for accomplishing this. As proposed, this project does not meet the intent nor guidance for a neighborhood center. Staff has done a really great job of pointing out the deficiencies, so I won't go into them. Furthermore, the land use of MEB has not been rezoned, and the existing zoning of BC two zoning uh establishes this as predominant retail as well. So I, if we look at the BVCP as the um sort of guiding uh guiding document, and the zoning is the supporting document, I think both of these point to uh this having a stronger commercial and retail base than is being proposed with this project. Um, so I think that it needs to be the applicant should take a closer look at what the BVCP and the BC two zoning um are asking for.
Thank you, ML, uh, George.
Wow, um, ML um was very eloquent in what she said, and I second that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start my comments, try to, try to keep them relatively brief at a, at a, at a more of a thirty thousand-foot level. Um, which is, um, while I respect the applicant and what they're proposing here, uh, to me, coming in with this application, maxing out every level of density on the site um is a strategy, and, and I think Chandler said it best, of seven-pound, ten-pound, five-pound bag. And um, you know, it forces us to comment on something that is so outrageously outsized that we whittle down to the six pounds in the five-pound bag instead of starting where we should, which is with BC two, um, and how this site is zoned and how it should interact with the community. So um, I also want, um, uh, we haven't had the opportunity to thank uh the public for coming out um, and uh heard the public loud and clear as it relates to how many people uh value what's there today. Um, understand that change is inevitable, um, but want something that respects where Boulder was and where it's going and um doesn't destroy their community along the way. Um, of the people we heard, only a handful uh were for the project, of which um two actually worked for the developer uh in public comment. So uh just, just some things to, to reflect on. Um, I agree with ML that um, I, I don't believe this uh um, uh, works with the BBC plan as, as BC, as BC two has stated. Um, I, I'm not opposed to housing here. Uh, I'm not opposed to redevelopment here. Um, but I think it needs to be predominantly neighborhood-serving commercial. I do not agree that retail is not profitable. It's just the fact that what's been proposed is the wet dream of profitability for the owners and developers of this site. And we need to step back as the planning board and look at it from a community holistic perspective and look at what it was intended for, uh, and try to honor that use in the neighborhoods that exist there. Thank you.
Um, okay, so I'm, I'll come to you. Um, so I'm gonna agree with um everything ML said and almost everything George said. Um, a little uncomfortable with the wet dream thing, but um um, uh, I, I, I think first Chandler did an amazing job of highlighting the uh the very specific uh BVCP and code challenges of what has been proposed. I think his framing it is, I think he said seven pounds in a five-pound bag is exactly the problem. It's just, it's like on steroids. Uh, and um, the, I think the, what I'd like to, I won't be here, but when you come back with your actual site plan, I would suggest that it be a smaller development. I would suggest that it be a smaller development with more retail. Neighborhood serving retail and that. Maybe one way to deal with the economic challenges of retail is to propose smaller plates. So that instead of 7,000 square foot spaces, you have 1,500 square foot spaces and you can have a lot of smaller. Neighborhood serving retail options that way. I also. So the BVCP is pretty clear that about these transition zones and that are near existing neighborhoods and encouraging low. And medium density residential uses such as single family housing, row homes and a variety of flats. You've only proposed flats and I, I sure there are reasons for that, but I'd like you to try to think about. Some additional housing types. Especially if you're moving into the transition zones. And the other, I want to reiterate something that. One of the members of the community said, Lisa, whose name, last name, I can't remember. She pointed out that. The BC zone density is supposed to be lower density than the downtown density, and yet that's not what you've proposed. So. Take it off steroids, add some more commercial space, look to see if you can add some additional. Housing, different housing types, and I will, of course, eventually talk about needing more green space and even some free range trees. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one, one other sentence to my comments, touching on something that Kurt mentioned, I think. And that is the hotel, which the applicant asked, also asked about, that you're proposing a hotel, if that is something that Planning Board and City Council would support. And I would say, based on Chandler's analysis, a hotel here would be extremely difficult to achieve. And I don't know that it is something that we're particularly trying to make happen in this particular neighborhood. It's not a neighborhood serving use, so. I would not go out of my way to put a hotel on this site.
Okay, thank you. All right, next is a key question number two, which I'll just read, which is the. Does the board have feedback on the conceptual site plan and building design? And this time I'll work backwards. George, let's start with you.
Sorry, can you, can you put that up on the screen real quick?
Sure. Chandler, are you still with us?
Thank you.
Okay, hold on.
I, I think I covered that in, in issue number one. I, I believe that the conceptual design, design. Was, was put forth as a strategy to maximize the site, and I think the developer needs to go back and look at. Our, our comments and really massively revise it. To more accommodate what, what this should be as far as BC2 goes. I don't have other comments.
All right, thanks, George. Chandler, if you can remember how to take that down so we can see ML. Thank you. ML, you're next.
Thank you. Okay, so. Again, I believe that the staff has provided good input on the site and building design issues that need addressing, including access, open space. Permeability and scale. I will add. That I, I would not support residential on the ground floor of any buildings facing baseline or 30th Street. It's a specific input. I would be interested in seeing a range of basic services that can support the neighborhood. So that the project does not become a car dependent development. I would also say that any parking reduction, especially for students, have a good option for the car storing reality. Lastly, you refer to this as an urban development. I'm not sure this has the density for that. And especially that such a significant amount of tenants would be students. Students are transient and are generally not here in summers and holidays. That's not a stable population for businesses that operate year round. And I think if we look at this site and the base mar site. There's a lot of student population that impacts the way those businesses can function. So given the BVCP and zoning. It would seem to me that your target population might better be focused on working folks and not on students. I think that would help bring stability to the businesses and create. A base for a neighborhood, a neighborhood center. Regarding the whole plan, like I say, take a look at what the staff has to say. I think they did a great job. And there is a lot of wiggle room provided, so I, I would consider who. Who you will be housing and how they can contribute to the. Neighborhood center intent of the zoning.
Thanks, ML. Kurt.
Thanks. I have a number of specific comments. First of all, I want to call out something that Sarah mentioned, which is about trying to. You make use of smaller units for the commercial, which I think is a great idea. I always like to see more smaller. Spaces rather than fewer larger spaces. We talked a little bit about the street sections, I think. To the narrower and more pedestrian friendly streets that you can make, the better. I think that there are some great examples in Boulder Junction, the north, north section, Spark area. I think those are fabulous streets. Mark already mentioned those, and so I think that that, that should be the goal. Minimizing the curb cuts and access, I think the staff talked about. Certainly, there is a. An access off of the parking lot on the, along Broadway, along baseline, a little small. Parking lot that you have there that seems unnecessary. It seems like that access could just come off of that street A. And there's also, it looks like there was a parking, an underground parking access to a big building, building A. Off of 30th Street, and it seems like that should come off of a lower. Street, basically also street A. To minimize the number of, of curb cuts on baseline and, and on 30th. In terms of the heights, I'll talk about, the, the next question is about the 55 foot height, but in general, I think that. Kind of echoing what some of the other people have said, there does need to be more variation in the height and the intensity. I think, you know, it's, it's pretty much a consistent four and five stories across the whole, the whole development. And a, a little more variation for, for interest and just to. To provide, to, to make it less of a, a solid wall, I think would be appropriate. It would come at the cost of housing units, and I'm always one to be in support of more housing. But I think that it's, it's pretty clear that if we want to have a successful and beautiful. Development, we need to have a little more articulation in the height. I will disagree with ML about the, the type of housing. I think that this is an ideal place for student housing. It is just across two streets from CU. And so providing student, at least a significant amount of student housing here, I think is, is completely appropriate. I did like what ML said about having commercial on, along baseline. I think that that is appropriate. I don't know that. The, on the, on the, the ground floor, I don't know that it needs to be all commercial all the way along 30th. Because on the other side, certainly on the Willville side, there's no commercial along the street. But along, along baseline, I think that that would be great. And I think that that is it.
Thanks, Laura.
Site design is not my forte, so I'm not going to say much here, other than to say, I think staff made some great comments and I didn't see anything in there. That I disagreed with, except when we'll get to the height at the next question, the question of height and transitions, I'll have something to say. And I do also generally agree that this is a great location for student housing as well as non-student housing. I like that you included a mix in there. To provide what ML is asking for, which is, you know, a, a stable population for the long term. Any housing you put here is more customers for the businesses, right? Whether it's part of the year or all the year, but I think it's great to have that mix. And being so close to CU is, is super important. So, and I will second the, the comments of my colleagues as well as staff.
Mark.
So, you know, we're, we're being asked to comment on. Five, four or five brown blocks that are four or five stories tall and, you know, it's really hard to comment. On the design of that, other than to say, yeah, it needs more articulation. And, and, and it does, it feels, it, you know, even to a guy that loves housing and loves density and likes urban. An urban feel, it feels, you know, it feels massive. And I think, again, when confronted with this thinness of design, it's hard, it's hard to say anything other than. Gee, it, it, it. I understand the community's concerns and fears about the scale of the development. And I, I'll just make a general comment on some design things that feel like are going on in Boulder, and that is buildings without tops. That you go up four or five floors and it kind of disappears into a thin line. And the building doesn't have a cap. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like a cake that has a top and a bottom. It, it goes up and it just ends. So I, I would urge you to, in your designs. To make the building have a top and a bottom and a middle and have it feel like something. I, I think that. The other thing that I see is gratuitous material changes. You have no materials. You, you have the Pinterest board of possible things. Not many of those images look like housing. They look more like commercial office buildings. And less like housing than what I would hope and, and, and hope that the community feels like. Which leads into my comments about the site design and open space. A lot of that open space is linear associated with the path next to Highway 36. And, and the community has talked about noise levels from 36 and, and really that is not a space. I think it's great to have trees along the path. I think there needs to be more connection from the path into the site. Because if you, what's shown, I counted one or two connections into the site from the path. And they kind of fritter away. And again, this is concept review, I understand, but it doesn't feel like a great connection from the path into the site. And counting that as open space is fine. But when you have roof open space, linear open space next to the street. And it seems like a minimization of community open space within the site, that if I come down out of my building. And I'm, I'm in the courtyard, I want to greet my friends or have a lunch outside or whatever. It doesn't feel like there's enough of that. So. Then the final thing is, you know, I'll. I don't want to denigrate the dark horse or sprouts or anything else, but it, it is a terrible sea of asphalt. And, and what you're proposing is an improvement, but that doesn't. Relieve you of the responsibility of design excellence and, and making that place. Feel like home for the people that are living there. I'm all for residential uses there, both student and. Non-student folk, but I, I really want it to feel like someplace that is identifiable as home versus. Storage for, for people.
Thanks, Mark. So I'll bounce off of Mark's comments about green space. Really totally inadequate in the, in the design that you've offered. I think he's, he's, he talked about it with great. Effect. I agree with almost everything I've heard from my colleagues. One thing we heard from neighbors was the concern about having tall buildings along 36 that would bounce sound over into. Martin Acres and I'm not a sound engineer, but I think that that's something for. Applicants and staff to be concerned about. And I wouldn't want to stay in a hotel or live in an apartment building that was right up against 36 if I didn't have to. And so I'm wondering if it's worth thinking about moving. Of course, throw out everything you have right now, but to think about moving your parking garage to be against 36. And having some sort of. Covering that would hide the parking garage from 36, much the way we approve that for the new buildings at Ball Aerospace. And then, so you're, instead of putting people against 36, you're putting cars against 36. And it could also be lower, maybe not bounce off so much sound to Martin Acres. And then you'd have a different configuration. Opportunity in the space that's left. That may not, that may not make any sense. I'm not an architect, but I'm just trying to think about ways to open up space. Make how the housing, the residential that you're thinking of building along there. Something that's more appealing to people to, you know, that you're, you're, you're not having people live up against the freeway. And I'll just reiterate what Mark said. It's really hard to comment on Lego buildings, which is what you're asking us to comment on. And. I understand that you don't want to go too far down the road before coming in, coming to staff for concept. Review and input and coming to us for concept review and input. But we almost don't know what we're responding to, and that's really, really challenging. So those are my comments. All right, we'll go to.
I, I thought that Sarah's suggestion of moving the, the parking to along 36. If it's possible, which may not, but if, if it were, I think it'd be great. I think that's a fantastic idea. And ordinarily, we say, oh, well, you can't have an exposed parking garage, right? It's got to be wrapped. Well, if it's on 36, the side on 36 does not have to be wrapped with anything, right? So whether it would work or not, I don't know, but I just want to raise that.
And one other thing is, as I'm looking at ML. In terms of concept site plan and building design, this is not human scaled, which I know is one of ML's concerns about development in town. This isn't human scaled, at least not as it's proposed at 55, mostly 55 feet across the way with very great density, small amounts of open space. So please put, please do what you can to put humans back into the overall design. Okay, question number three is broadly, is the proposed height of 55 feet. In general proportion to the height of existing buildings and the proposed or projected heights of approved buildings in the area. And I'm wondering, Chandler, if you can actually bring up, you had, had four sub-questions. Do you remember that in the, in the, in the. You know, the ones I'm talking about?
Yep. Hold on one sec there after all these pictures. Oh, wait. There we go.
Okay. I think under, if I read the proposal correctly, under height, you had four sort of sub-questions. Are these them? Okay, yes.
These are them. They just look, they're really long on a slide.
Okay. Okay, so. Does the board find that the building heights are compatible with the character of the area? Are the buildings form, massing and length designed to a human scale? If the board finds the building height is not compatible with the height of buildings in the surrounding area, is the project near enough to an area of redevelopment? Where higher intensity of use and similar building height is anticipated to justify the increased building height? Does the project preserve and take advantage of prominent mountain views from public spaces? And if there are prominent mountain views from the site, usable open spaces on the site or elevated common areas of the building. Are located and designed to allow users of the site access to such views? So those are sort of the boundary, not boundaries, but. A framework for us to, to tackle this particular question.
Those are taken from the site review criteria, just as an aside.
Okay, great. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Before we have the discussion, can I ask a question?
Sure. Sure.
So Chandler, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, or maybe Charles knows the answer to this. I'm sorry, I didn't queue this up ahead of time, but when we were doing the new site review criteria, and I assume this project is coming in under the new site review criteria.
Correct.
Talked about where would height modifications be appropriate? And we did not, as I recall, include a specific distance to another building of similar height. Where did we land on that? What does it say in the new site review criteria?
There isn't a requirement that has a distance requirement or any kind of saturation requirement for height modifications. They're considered individually.
They're considered individually. And what is our, what are our goalposts or what are our guidelines that say when it's appropriate?
These criteria are right here.
Is here, okay.
Which are again, extracted from the site review criteria.
Right. So we don't actually, we don't have to determine these now, but they're good framing for our thinking.
Yeah, that, that was our hope.
Okay, great. If you don't mind Chandler taking this down so we can see our colleagues. Thank you. I'll start with Mark this time and we'll work our way over.
Okay, I'm not. The site layout, as, as far as it goes, doesn't seem to take advantage of any view corridors as, as far as I, I can tell. And it answers the same question in terms of building height. I'm not afraid of fifty five feet. I, I don't think the community should be afraid of fifty five feet. We have a fifty five foot height limit. It's not thirty five feet. It's fifty five feet with the right community benefit. But given what we've been presented, which are these, the blocky Lego-like buildings in the current layout, I, I see, I see, I don't see any design taking advantage of views. And that speaks to, goes back to the open spaces that ideally you would have building layouts that create meaningful open spaces that also incorporate views. So that's what I have to say about this question.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Or Lisa? Either one. Starts with an L. Good for me. You can call me Leonardo. I don't care. So I also am not afraid of fifty five feet. I think it's important for the community to understand the height limit that we refer to as the height limit in B C two is the by right height limit. That means that the developer can build that without going through any special process, without asking for any special permission, without meeting any extra criteria, they can just do it. But in this zone, it is appropriate to go up to fifty five feet if they go through the site review process and we determine by our criteria that that is appropriate for that site. So they're not breaking any rules. They're not getting any special exemption. They're going through the process that the city has determined is the appropriate process to get up to fifty five feet, which is allowed at this site. So I just want to make sure people understand that because most people don't. I didn't two years ago. So fifty five feet, I think, is appropriate. This is a site that is surrounded by really tall buildings that are part of the CU campus that do not have to obey the height limit because they're part of CU. So they don't have to obey the fifty five feet. That's why you have those super tall buildings in Willville one. So that's on one side of the project. The other, the boundary to the west is an elevated highway, so I'm not really worried about compatibility with that. And also to, to the, what is that? If you head towards Mexicali, what direction is that? North? To the north? I think that's north.
No, it's north. It's heading north.
Heading north. Again, you're, this is an off ramp from thirty six. So it's not that it's, it's not typical neighborhood centers are actually adjacent to single family residential, and then we're concerned about transitioning down to that. This whole site is bounded either by an elevated highway, an off ramp from an elevated highway, a major arterial five lane road that has a turning lane in the center that separates it from commercial right across the street. And then there's residential, it's kind of catty quarter, but not actually adjacent in any way. Yeah, and that's basically the whole site. Like, it's not adjacent to anything that, that for me would prevent it from going up high. I do agree with what staff said in the packet, which is that it doesn't abide by some of our criteria in terms of the length of building frontages and variation of roof lines. As Kurt pointed out, it needs more variability. But in general, I'm not afraid of fifty five feet on this site. I'm not especially concerned about the transition zones over on adjacent to baseline, again, because that's a five lane highway, not a highway, but a five lane arterial road. So, so yeah, I think with some sensitive design and, and make this actually something that people think is attractive and that they feel is a nice place to be, I'm not concerned about the height or the transition zones, frankly.
I agree with a lot of that. I think certainly a maximum height of fifty five feet is appropriate here, given the proximity to Willville and Bear Creek apartments. And we haven't mentioned the new north hall and whatever the one is there on the east side of Willville, which are six or seven stories at least. Across baseline, there was mention that, oh, well, there's one to three story buildings there, but that's BT one zone. And that is almost certainly going to change. It's certainly not a residential neighborhood directly across baseline, so that I don't think should be of a concern. To the northeast is residential, but the, even if this were built right to the corner at fifty five feet, the dominant presence from that neighborhood to the northeast would be Williams Village one. That, that would be what you would see when you looked up in the sky. And so, and also right on the corner, even that is not actually single family, it's RM two. So I'm not concerned about that. As I mentioned before, I do think that there needs to be height articulation just to provide greater interest and some, just to, to, to make for better architecture, frankly.
ML?
Thank you. So I'm going to take a holistic approach here. I don't think height is a separate item from the entirety of the project. And if we were getting what the BVCP and zoning set up, I would certainly consider a height modification beyond the one to three story context to support this. I am not afraid of fifty five foot high buildings either. But I think that as this project stands, the project is not meeting the basic intent of a neighborhood center. So I wouldn't see a reason to support an added height. We're not getting what we need and what we want when our zoning is set up for. So to me, that's a, that's a broader look at height. I think if we're getting what we want, if we're, if our, if we believe our comp plan and our zoning were correct in identifying what should be where in the city, and this was doing that, by all means, I, I think this is a great place to have fifty five foot height. But I, and I don't think it's supporting the basic intent that our planning tools have identified for this site.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, I, I think ML said kind of exactly what I was thinking in a much more elegant way than I could say it. I also agreed with Mark and, and sort of just the general massing and stair stepping and a number of my colleagues. The one area I, I I disagree with is, I'd like to point out, is that we don't control CU's zoning. And I don't think that it should necessarily be taken in as the city of Boulder and what we choose to do with our zoning. We should be taking in CU buildings as context to the backdrop of our city because we have no control over what they do as far as what they do with their buildings. And by allowing this site to go up to fifty five feet, we create yet another tent pole in the city to maximize that fifty five feet because now we have a context in the city that in this area that people will leverage down the road. And so I think we need to be cognizant of that as it relates to, if we look at the context of just the city of Boulder outside of CU that exists there, it's all one to three story buildings. The developer also hasn't provided any elevations, any sightlines. We're looking at flat plans angled towards twelve story buildings conveniently. And so it's very difficult, I think, for me to judge whether or not fifty five feet is appropriate and where on the site. My gut is it probably is under the right circumstances in select areas, but I, I think as ML, ML put it best that I, and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thanks. And I will throw my hat in with ML and George. In fact, I had written here, I don't think city code based development should, should use non-city code compliant developments to justify height modifications. So we were on the same page on that. That being said, I, I agree with Kurt that there, it's been said before, we need different articulation heights in this area. I think the transition requirements for transition or the suggestions for transitions towards the lower lower density neighborhoods might be the right place to do it. And one thing I just want to, I want to swing back for a moment to the conceptual site plan. The, the length of these buildings, some of these buildings are quite big and that building that's the wraps around the proposed parking garage feels like a fortress. Or it looks like a fortress. I don't know whether it would feel like one. There's no permeability there. And so I just wanted to bring that back up. I had written it in the wrong box. Okay, yes, please.
Sorry, just one enhancement. I just want to say, you know, I think that we rejected the tent pole idea. As Charles said, we didn't, we didn't say that if you're within X number of feet of a tall building, you get to be tall. There's no rule like that. So for me, it's not so much about is this going to be a new tent pole or is it near a tent pole? It's more about is this site appropriate for higher intensity and height? And, you know, where in the city would we build taller? Where would we do fifty five feet if we were trying to plan that? And right along major arterials, baseline is the major east-west arterial in South Boulder. We use it all the time. As people said, that's why it's so busy. Right? It's right by an elevated highway. It's got a major grocery store in it. Like this is, it's as Macon Cole said, it's hugely walkable. It's hugely bikeable. We have just invested an awful lot in infrastructure, in underpasses, in pedestrian crosses, crossings, in bike enhancements in this area. This is the place where you want intensity. This is the place where you want height, regardless of how tall the buildings next door are. And also its location quite close to campus. And it is actually pretty close to the bus line to get to downtown if you get onto Broadway. So for me, regardless of what else is around it, for me, it's more about like, do I need to be sensitive to something that's a single family neighborhood that's right adjacent? And, and as we discussed, it's kind of ringed by arterials and highways and stuff like that. That's, I'll wrap there.
Go ahead, George.
One comment on tent poles. I mean, half the board used the justification of the, the buildings next door to it being a hundred and twenty feet. And so you can call it whatever you want, but the fact of the matter is, when these things come up in planning board, the first thing someone references is the fifty five foot building down the street from that building as context. And context is, I believe context is in the code as it relates to what we have to evaluate. And what I meant by temple is exactly that. Contextually, Boulder outside of CU is one to three stories. So call it a temple, call it context, but I, I, I don't think that that's rejected from, from what's in, what's written in the code. I think context is in there.
All right, we will go to the last question, which is other key issues that are identified by the board. So I'll start over here. George, I'm going to go start with you.
Want to throw up the questions for us?
Yeah. Chandler?
There is, there are no questions. It's
It's, it's, it's the other key issue.
Anything you guys want to talk about or identify?
No, I, I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Okay, ML?
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you Chandler for putting this question up there. I have three other issues that I would like to put on the table. One has already been spoken about, but I'll reiterate it because it didn't come up in our key questions. And that is, the project is subject to historic preservation review. This could result in landmark designation eligibility. And I think that this needs to happen prior to the use and site review. And I don't know, you know, where that should or shouldn't land, but I don't think that the project should, should come back for use or site review with the potential for a, a piece of the site to be landmarked and taken into another purview. So anyway, point number one. Number two, the applicant has talked about the project needing to be phased. And I think we have, they're talking about a two-year process of deconstruction and construction. And I would just point out that the phasing should include keeping vital services operable during the, the construction time. So we don't have this massive vacancy, lack of service or declining service and kind of lose a vital connection for the community to have its service needs met. So I think phasing needs to be very carefully thought through and how things might continue to function as a service center during the construction project, process. And lastly, you know, this project highlights the deep issues that come out of updating longstanding sites. We have a crisis with affordable housing and a lack of affordable commerce. If the Williams family truly intend to make a difference with developing this site, I suggest a deep rethink on how to provide what our city needs on this site. Thank you.
Thanks, ML. Kurt?
I think ML brought up two of the important or the, the hot button, I guess, issues. One relating to the dark horse. You're well aware that this is a contentious issue. I, based on my understanding of the, the historic preservation code, the dark horse would not be eligible for, for landmarking. There, there are criteria in terms of historic significance, architectural significance and environmental significance. And I don't think that it meets any of those three. There's also, there's preserving the building, but that's different from preserving the actual business, right? I think what people absolutely love and, and cherish and treasure is the combination of that building that so many of us have seen so much of and, and really love and the business in it. And we can preserve the building, but we can't preserve the interior, we can't preserve the business through landmarking. That said, I think that it might be a wise decision for the applicant to try to come up with a design that keeps the dark horse building where it is and as it is and works around it. I think that that might might smooth the way for future approvals both at planning board and at council when this comes up. So, you know, how possible that is, I don't know. But I think it's, that's sort of a political decision, but it's something to think about. I think ML also raised the, the question of the phasing. Obviously, as an applicant, you want to minimize the amount of time that businesses are out of, are now operating, right? And you're not getting revenue. But I think it'll be key to try to especially keep the, the, the sprouts closed as short a time as possible to minimize the amount of time before it can reopen because that's a crucial neighborhood amenity and contributes to the walkability. The last additional point I have is about that parking space on baseline, which has continued to, to bother me, the, the parking area just on the north side, which again, is motivated by flood considerations, I think. But we, we try very hard to avoid having parking in front of buildings on streets. And I, I don't know if there are alternatives that you can come up with. I mean, certainly one would be if it were just a permanent food, food cart, food truck pod, I think that that would be fantastic. That would be very, feel very different from just a general parking lot. I realize that it would benefit Uh, I realize that it would benefit this, the sprouts or whatever, whatever grocery store goes in there if it were just a regular parking lot. But, um, but to the extent that we can make that a, a lively place, a community place, a hopefully a greener place than just a parking lot, I think that that would be great.
Laura.
Thank you. Um, I do wanna address a couple of things that the community brought up. And I recognize that most people have had to leave because it's very late and people have things to do, but maybe some folks will watch this uh, on, when they have time. Um, and for the folks who are still here, thank you for still being here, uh, both online and in person. So, so the dark horse, I just wanna reiterate what, what Kurt said is that even if we did use the Historic Preservation Act to preserve that building, it would just be the exterior of the building that we can preserve. We cannot preserve the interior using that statute. We cannot mandate that the Williams family continue to rent to the current tenant. And we cannot mandate that the current tenant, the person who runs the dark horse, that family, that they continue to do that indefinitely. We, we can't, we have no control over any of that, right? We cannot tell a private property owner who they have to rent to. And we cannot tell a business, you must remain open because the community loves you. People have the right to make choices with their property and with their businesses. So the only thing that we could preserve through historic preservation is the exterior of the building. That's it. Um, and the question of is that, does it have the historic significance? Does it meet the criteria? I, I don't know. That's for the landmarks board to determine. I agree with ML. That's not our purview and I strongly encourage staff to figure out a way. I know that there's some challenges with sequencing and with landmarking ahead of a development proposal that need to be worked through. And it's much more complex than we have time to talk about tonight. But I strongly feel that that is not planning board's purview to tell an applicant that they need to landmark their property without the landmarks board having determined that they would be willing to landmark over the objection of the property owner, because that would be essentially what we're doing if we tell them that they have to apply for landmarking. So for me, that's a very serious, very serious action for the city to take. Um, and I'm very interested to hear from staff how we're gonna sequence that and do that so that the landmarks board has their proper say and that the applicant gets due process in front of the landmarks board if we are in fact considering historic preservation of that building. Um, that said, I know that people love the dark horse. And I appreciate that the applicant is trying to work with the owner to preserve that use, not just the building, but the use. Um, and make sure that that, that uh, community amenity continues to be around if possible, right? If possible. So that's my thoughts on the dark horse. And then the other one I wanted to just mention is the affordability aspect, which of course everybody here cares about. You know, we all see that Boulder is becoming less and less affordable over time. That, uh, you know, people who have very important jobs, but that don't make huge amounts of money get squeezed out of Boulder. And so we are interested in affordable housing. I just wanna make sure people understand, because again, I didn't understand any of this two years ago. State law requires that the city give developers choices. We cannot mandate you must build affordable housing right here. We simply can't do that. What we can do is through our inclusionary housing program, say either you build, and currently it's 25%, either you build 25% of these units affordable onsite, or you contribute what's called cash-in-lu, or you can give us land of the equivalent value so that we can build it somewhere else. Most developers right now choose to do the cash-in-lu option. And we, the planning board and the city council have no control over that. The state says we have to give them that option, right? That's the program that we have. So anybody who's concerned about affordable housing, I do encourage you to go to the city's inclusionary housing website. There's a really good website there that will show you where we are building that affordable housing, what we are doing with that developer money. Because I think people think we just give developers a pass and they don't have to build the affordable housing and it never gets built. Well, it is getting built. It's just getting built in different places around the city. And we can actually, as one person mentioned, leverage that money and get federal money and build even more than if we had it onsite. So the program is working even though it's not always very visible. So again, I appreciate that the applicant is willing to do what we require them to do and contribute that, to that affordable housing program. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Mark.
Okay. I, I wanted at the time when we had a whole bunch of people in the room, I wanted to thank them for coming because I could tell that there were a lot of first-time speakers here. And that was exciting uh, to me. I, I don't remember exactly when it was, but I knew I was nervous as hell the first time I came and spoke before a board or council or whatever. So it, it was, it was great to see everyone come out. And it was, you know, it was understandable to uh, uh, come out about your favorite spot. And, and even, you know, maybe as, as a, I'm an older guy here, been here a long time. I remember Tom's Tavern. I remember the Blue Note. I remember Fred's, Juanita's, Barard's. I mean, there are, these are, there are places that were, I had meaningful events at. And, and so to the point, we don't have a mechanism. Not just planning board, not council. Government doesn't have, really have a mechanism for preserving beloved businesses. So uh, as sad as it may seem, I think what, what's being proposed here tonight is to try to reincorporate uh, some version of the dark horse is actually uh, noble because as you say, you don't have to do that. There, there is, there is no law, there is no code. So I, I think that, that is a, a noble and admirable effort. And I, and I, I feel like a sincere and I hope you continue to um, work towards that. The only other thing I'm gonna say is that I would really welcome, I think the community wants, if it's done right, would really welcome a true neighborhood center here. And I think that uh, whether it's four or five stories, whether uh, the, an FAR of 1.8 or 1.9, that is not so much the question as can it be designed in such a way that after two years of missing their favorite spots and suffering through stuff, people go, oh, this is actually really great. This, you know, I, yeah, I wanna go shop at the new sprouts. This is really great. And uh, I, I wanna eat at Corelli's in their new location with their new interior. That sounds great. And, and, and the community, there are lots of things that have been developed and redeveloped that ultimately the community grows to love. And uh, and I hope this is, this is one of those places, but it, it um, it will require a, a, a bunch more uh, design work to, I think uh, from what I've heard tonight, convince this board that what you've got plans for is, is really will make a uh, a, a beloved neighborhood center.
Great, thanks. Um, so uh, the only thing I'll, the two things I'll bring up, one is again, those sound issues. Um, and how you, how you uh, lay out the, what the layout ultimately is and how to reduce sound bouncing into other neighborhoods. Uh, and I think we kinda skipped over the challenge, the parking challenges that you're gonna have. The, the, the more units you have, the more bedrooms you have, the more parking you're gonna require. And while you can push down some, make a request for some parking reduction, you're, you're setting yourself up for a, a, a pretty large request. Um, and uh, maybe again, bringing it, bringing down the, the scale for a bit would make it, will be helpful. And my final comment is, I'm clearly gonna have to go eat at the dark horse. I have, I have never gone to the dark horse. So I am, I am going to have to go to the dark horse. All right, um, that is, what? Right now? Okay, so that is, uh, that completes our public, our public hearing. Do we normally, do, do you guys normally have an opportunity to respond? Okay, come on, and before, as you gets, um, Lisa's gonna be joining us for matters. So keep a lookout for her on, on, online.
Yeah, I'll just say a few things. So first of all, I, I think we've been here a few times and you've hopefully seen that when we ask questions, we mean those as real questions. So uh, this was extremely helpful, the feedback that we got. And so I think there's clear direction on a number of topics that's very, very useful. The other thing I would say is that um, I, I totally hear maybe the wish for more information and more design. Um, concept plan has crept up into a higher and higher and higher level of design over the years. Um, but this is a local family and a local business. And there isn't a national development fund to pay for an incredible amount of design at this stage. And the intent was to come with the original, uh, you know, comply with the original intended concept plan and, and literally ask the questions before a bunch of decisions were made. So that you can tell us, hey, you know, you guys are, I'll take it on myself. Hey, Bill, you're wrong. Think about this. And so then it could actually be changed. So um, it's really great feedback. Really appreciate all that. I, I will point out one thing because of all that we heard about the dark horse. I first set foot in Boulder in 1991. The first restaurant I ever went into was a dark horse. I've loved it since then. The first meeting that we had with the owner, the question was, we have a problem with the dark horse. We need to save it. The family's been subsidizing it for 15 years. The owner is 70, is not gonna be running it for another 15 years. So we gotta figure something out. And that, uh, you guys got a letter from both parties saying, we gotta figure something out, committing to each other to do that. So um, I hope the neighbors can hear that. It's the intent to figure something out. Um, other than that, uh, thank you. And you have anything else to add?
I first came to Boulder as a climber at 16. And the first place I went to the dark was to the dark horse, but I can't tell you about the rest of the night. I'm only 64. Um, but no, I mean, thank you for the input. It's, concept plan has become, as we've done, concept plan and site review, it's become this really kind of awkward dance or, or just difficult dialogue in that you're trying to get enough feedback to go the next step. And at the same time, you're not getting enough information to always give the right feedback. And so I appreciate the fact that you've spent the time. I mean, this is four hours of your life or something, that you spent the time to give us the feedback you could based on what we gave you. I feel like we heard you and I feel like we got a, a lot of good input. And we can come back with some really good stuff for site review that I think we'll take that into account and we'll provide the kind of place. And I, my goal is, you know, to make this the neighborhood center in Boulder that people say, well, when we define neighborhood center, go to Williams Village. That's what it is. But do it like that. And uh, I hope we can live up to that.
Great, thank you.
And just lastly, usually we ask questions if anything was unclear, but I've been kinda going through it, taking notes, and I think you all were very clear. So I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. Um, we will now turn to matters. Um, is Lisa online? Okay. Lisa Smith. Hello, hello.
Hello. First, let me make sure that my, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Um, so I let Sarah and a couple staff members know. But because it's been really challenging to get consistent childcare on Tuesday evenings, I'm gonna be stepping down from planning board. Um, so I wanted to say a big thank you to all the planning board members um, and to staff and to everyone who comes before us, whether members of the public or otherwise. It's been wonderful. What is it? Almost four years now, I think, Sarah?
Yes.
And yeah, but unfortunately I just wasn't able to kind of consistently be, as you saw, because I have been missing meetings and not able to chair when Sarah's out and so on. And so it's just been kind of a logistical nightmare. So I'm sorry to step down. Um, and I'll miss all of you. And I wanted to be sure to say it this way before I send a more formal, broader email. Um, and I had really hoped to be there tonight in person, one, to attend the meeting and two, to make this announcement in person. But uh, as a symptom of the overall problem, that didn't happen. So yeah, that's, that's where I'm at. And thanks for making the time at the end of a long meeting.
Well, Lisa, thank you for uh, letting us know. I'm sure everyone has something they wanna say. Um, I will just say, you're managing to get out of uh, being chair just in time. I think you timed it that way. All right, I'll let everyone else make a comment.
Well, I'll just say, you, you will be missed. And uh, I've certainly enjoyed serving with you, but you know, the um, I think we all understand whether it's children or elderly parents or whatever it might be. Uh, life has a way of interrupting um, intense hours of volunteer service that extend late into the night. So anyway, uh, uh, everything is understood and, and we wish you the best.
I second everything that Mark said. And Lisa, I am so sorry to see you go. It has been a pleasure to serve with you. And you bring a really unique perspective to the board that I don't think any of the rest of us could ever replicate. So it is a loss to see you go. And I'm so sorry, but completely understand and wish you all the best in everything that you have on your plate right now. And uh, you're gonna come to the dark horse, right?
But, but sometime soon. And I wanted to warn Sarah. I didn't know she'd never been there. Watch out for the bathroom doors, Sarah.
Okay, good. Good to know.
Yeah, I totally agree. We'll, we'll really miss you. And, but I think it's admirable that you managed to get through um, four years with this kind of, you know, with a lot of these challenges. So um, so thank you for doing that and thank you for your service. And um, sorry to see you go.
ML.
Gosh, Lisa, I was just getting used to having, sharing a board with you again. Oh, wow. Well, I do hope that um, our paths cross again because um, you know, you have a, a really good perspective on things and I've always appreciated that. So thank you and I hope you enjoy your time with your little guy.
George.
And I'll, I'll, I'll echo the same and just say, aw, man. I'm really, really sorry to see you go. Um, really, really appreciate your perspective and it will be missed. And um, thank you for your service to Boulder over the past four years.
Uh, Lisa, I'm pretty sure Brad and staff might wanna say something.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. And really on behalf of the department, we uh, to uh, Lisa, very much appreciate your uh, service to the community, first of all. Uh, I hope we say often enough to all of you that we recognize that you're doing this as a volunteer effort and that it does take a fair amount of effort and time and, and, and commitment uh, that's really representative of your love for the community. And we know, Lisa, you have that and that you've uh, had that in, in various roles and capacities uh, with the city. And I have no doubt uh, as I think I, I dropped a quick note to you, that you will remain very engaged with the community over the years. So I, I suspect we'll continue to see you. But uh, but thank you for that service. And also uh, just very sorry to see you go for all the reasons that others have said that uh, you have provided a really unique and, and important voice. And um, I'm quite sure we won't be able to replicate that, but uh, uh, we'll do our best, so. And I don't know if Charles.
Yeah, thanks so much for your service, Lisa. Uh, the last four years, you have definitely uh, affected the outcome of a lot of important projects. And particularly through the COVID era when all this was so challenging. So thank you very much for spending the time that you were able to spend with us and look forward to seeing you in o- other corners of the community, maybe at the dark horse.
It's gonna be a running, running gag. Anyone else before we let Lisa go to bed? Go ahead. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I just wanna say thank you so much, Lisa. I didn't get to work with you very long, but it was a very, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Um, it was really great to work with you and I wish you the best. Um, and I uh, look forward to working with you in different ways in the future.
So Laura, I mean Lisa, I, I was, I called Laura Lisa earlier. Lisa, I'm gonna urge you to uh, conclude this meeting for us and are there matters from staff? Are there, I'm sorry, are there matters from staff?
Nothing from me, Brad.
Uh, I was just gonna say that we are uh, starting the new year with uh, a plenty to, to bring you. Uh, it'll be a full year and I appreciate that you've all been managing uh, kind of discussions about the schedule here in the first few months as well. Uh, understanding the, the desire to move the one item tonight, that I think was good foresight. So appreciate that one.
I think so.
Uh, and, and accommodations from everybody. But we're gonna work hard this year to, to space out the calendar to the best of our ability and always appreciate and recognize everybody's flexibility. Uh, but in reviewing the work plan uh, for the whole department this year and getting that finalized, uh, it is, it is gonna continue to be a full one. So thank you in advance for all your work in that regard.
And you know, it just dawned on me while we're talking about um, Lisa's departure. So council is gonna be making appointments on March 21st. So we won't be um, down a board member for too long. And then I think last day of service for our current outgoing board members is um, so that's gonna be March 31st of this year. So we'll have you through the month of March.
Okay. Um, just so you know, I'm, I've already sent dates that I won't be here in March.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I'll be out of country. Yeah. Then you're off.
Just a quick question. So being down a board member, I assume means that doesn't change anything in terms of we still need four votes to be able to pass anything. Okay. So that makes attendance a little more complicated, but bring it, we'll do it. And Lisa, was this your last meeting?
Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, I had hoped to attend in person, but that didn't pan out.
So we definitely have to take you out for a beer or a coffee or dinner or whatever.
Yeah.
All right, Lisa. Adjourn the meeting for us.
Great. Well, thank you all for your hard work. Sorry I wasn't part of it this evening. I'm glad I've gotten to serve with all of you for so long and some of you for not as long, but it's been wonderful. And I hereby adjourn this meeting.
All right.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, thanks. You missed it.